Okay. Call the meeting to order? Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Mr. Maseri is going to be missing this meeting tonight, so I am going to sit in and chair the meeting for him. Before we get started, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome our newest Board of Selectmen member, Kathryn Minapelli. Welcome to the board. We look forward to working with you, and congratulations on your election. And you want a -- any big statement or anything you'd like to say before we get started? We're good?
Let's get going.
Okay. First order of business tonight is going to be the minutes. Kate, I think you have the order there, so we'll let you take over.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 27, 2015 regular session minutes as written.
Second. I give a motion, hidden motion, second by -- who was that? Steve?
Steve.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. One absent. Okay. And you can handle -- I think Steve can sign those.
I can sign those.
And one absten -- what, one abstention? Did you abstain there? Oh, you -- did you vote?
I'm sorry.
One abstention.
I abstained, yes.
So it's three in favor, one abstention, and one absent. Please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 27, 2015 executive session minutes as written.
Second. Motion by Ms. Minapelli, seconded by Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May 4, 2015 regular session minutes as written.
Second. All right. I -- who was that, second?
That was Geoff.
Geoff, thank you. You got a motion by Kathryn, seconded by Geoff. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention?
One abstention. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May 4, 2015 executive session minutes as written.
Second. Got a motion by Ms. Minapelli, seconded by Ms. Yule. All those -- any discussion?
Yeah. Notice something about these minutes? They're so well done that we have no objections there.
Agreed. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
One abstention.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, I --
Nope, I think that's good. I think we got all the minutes. The next thing on the agenda is the vehicle use policy. I'd like to turn it over to the town administrator for -- if you have some brief remarks you wanted to make on that.
I do, yes.
And I believe we have a motion to approve the first reading?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So included is a copy of the vehicle use policy, updated from the first public presentation, which was made at a meeting in February. The board members will recall that I presented it as a draft to get some initial feedback. We took steps to try to incorporate the feedback that we received at that meeting back in February and to ensure that this policy reflected the intentions of the board. We've also asked for town council to review the policy as well, the proposed policy as well, and town council's comments are incorporated into this draft. I think that the substance of the policy is the same as it was when proposed back in February. Again, with regard to what the intention is, the intention was to try to set a uniform method for determining whether or not an employee needs to be issued a vehicle, whether or not that vehicle needs to be allowed to be taken home, or alternatively, if the town's not in a position to issue the employee a vehicle, whether or not it is cost-effective for the town to instead issue a monthly vehicle allowance rather than to pay mileage at what would be expected would be the IRS rate per mile driven. And you'll see that the policy includes not only form for the request but also documentation of the extent to which the vehicle is expected to be driven in determining the need and the assignment of the vehicle. The only other substantial notes, I guess I would make, are the amounts. Again, we've tagged in here the amount of $400 if it's an employee who needs to have a vehicle for take-home use on a full-time basis, and we had an alternative amount of $250 for somebody who is using it on a part-time basis as well. And that would be for the part-time inspectors largely. My last note is just, you may notice that at the end of the policy itself, there is an area, it's on page four, that identifies that employees requesting take-home use of a vehicle shall. It shows a process that would need to be followed. That shows you how we would go about determining whether or not somebody needs a vehicle. And then, on the next page, we've added a section for general restrictions, which shows just some general use requirements, which is based on best practices that we were able to find from the policies proposed by our insurance carrier, Maya. And again, the intention would be, assuming first reading of the -- first reading of the policy this evening, we then would approach our employees and/or collective bargaining units to discuss implementation, and then ultimately bring it back for a second reading and a final approval by the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Part of the policy is going to be having vehicles here at Town Hall prepared to be assigned to some employees? Is that going to be part of the new goal?
That's a possibility. The approach that I've urged that we take is to look at what the need is for the vehicles, and then based on that to determine how we want to provision those vehicles. It could be that those vehicles are provisioned shared amongst multiple departments. It could be that it makes more sense based on the workload that a vehicle does go home to somebody's residence. It could be that we determine that we just don't have the vehicles offered, and we're going to put them in a situation where they're simply being reimbursed by mileage because of the amount of miles that they drive. It's going to really depend upon how they present and how we document the workload for each particular department.
Just Kathryn, for your sake, one of the reasons that brought up this whole vehicle policy changes, over the last several years, we've had some employees getting a monthly stipend of about $600 to $700 a month to take -- use their own personal vehicles, and we felt the costs were becoming to the point where we had to probably address it. And that's why you see some of the costs that are being recommended by the town administrator that are far less than that, and then you heard the $200 for part-time and $400 for full-time. So that's not 100 percent the reason why the policy, but one of the reasons why it was stout to be addressed. There were several other reasons. Okay. I just have one other question about the insurance reference that's in there.
Mm-hmm.
So if an employee uses their own personal vehicle, they have to have this -- you're requiring this level of insurance, the bodily injury and the property damage levels. You're dictating that. Is that at their own expense, or is there?
That was the intention, yes, that it would be at their expense.
Remember, oh, I'm sorry.
There was a question that was just identified. I'm not seeing a particular page here identifying the dollar amount for the reimbursement. I call it being in the draft that was presented for concept review in February. I don't know why it's not in here now. Again, just for clarity's sake, the intention was it would be $400 for full-time and $250 for part-time.
Yeah. The old one has it in it.
I thought so, yes. Okay. We'll make that correction before we present it to any of the bargaining units.
Mr. Yule?
Yes. On the insurance issue, the levels that we have, is that through Maya? Was that something that they suggested that the employees have if they use it for personal use? Not personal use, but if they -- I'm sorry, that's the wrong term. If they're allowed to use a car as you described it.
These were the recommendations from town council with regard to the thresholds. We can consult with the insurance carrier to ensure that it would comply with whatever their minimum requirements are.
Right. What comes to my mind is that you have U-Bo out there and another company out there, and they caught wind of this. I know my policy came back saying that, you know, it doesn't -- I have to pay extra for having -- if I'm using my car for business, I have to pay extra insurance for that. So I think this kind of falls into that category. So the insurance company might have a different number.
We will consult with Maya, our insurer, to make sure we have the right number in there.
And the other thing is, on the chain of command on this, I mean, it all ends with you, correct, on the decision-making on this? And what about, I guess it's department heads who, they'll have to go to their department head and then ask the question, can they use the car for this specific job and so on? Does everything have to come through you, and then if that's the case, would that not be quite laborious on you?
I don't believe so. I think, I believe that the spirit of the charter is that the terms of employment, including compensation, are intended to be determined by the town administrator. I'm going to be relying heavily on the vetting of these requests by the department head, and depending upon the instance, potentially the human resources director and finance director. But I don't believe so, because I really think that we're going to find that the instance of, for example, a take-home vehicle or vehicle allowance is going to be limited. I think we're really going to find that it's limited, or it may be that there's a need that far outweighs what it is that's in place right now, in which case, and we'll need to address it accordingly. But I'm not concerned with regard to the demand.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a notation. I did locate, it's in the, what's in the documentation here with regard to take-home vehicles, the dollar amount. And it is $200, not $250. $200 or $400 for vehicle allowance is on the form. So thank you.
Okay. So it's on the form, okay.
On the form, okay.
So the form. Gilbert, the department vehicles on page four, where you referenced that, should we add, should you add something in that particular paragraph at the end, or otherwise, or if they don't have the markings that you're referencing here, it has to be approved by you not to have markings? Because I know, maybe even before my time on the board, I heard having markings on some of the vehicles was somewhat of a debate or an issue. And maybe, Mr. O'Larry, you have some knowledge of this subject, but my recollection that that subject was always one that was somewhat...
It goes back probably close to 35 or 40 years, right, Mr. Toros? Where some members of the board felt that it was imperative that the, that an insignia be prominently displayed on the town-owned vehicle so that it's easily identifiable and fewer issues in relation to the usage of it and who owns it. Other members at the time, over time, had less of an issue with it. We had some employees who were somewhat put out that the insignia was going to be so big that, you know, and the response was, well, if you don't want to work for the employee, you don't want the vehicle, no problem. So, I mean, it's been all over the board.
I was just curious on what, how you were going to...
From my perspective, the, again, the policy was specifically tailored to apply to all departments with the exception of the school department, the fire department, and the police department. And that was done with purpose. It may be that when we have discussion with our employees, that we identify an instance that would be suitable as it's been identified here, but I cannot immediately think of one where it wouldn't serve the public interest to have the vehicle identified as a town-owned vehicle.
But we've had some insignias as large as the one on the podium over there and some as small as a decal about this size.
I only bring it up as I think it's a good identification for you, knowing that that particular paragraph could bring some discussion, only because I've heard this in the past, so thank you, Mr. O'Larry.
So noted, thank you.
Educated.
No, because I'm concerned it's, you know, whatever the administration decides.
Yeah, I'm with you. All right. Any more discussion on it? You have a motion?
Just, actually, just another question. So as part of the reading, we're approving the form also. So if the form is going to be modified as far as the allowance goes...
Would it all come back at one time?
Would it all come back to the board, or...
Yes, it would. That's the intention.
Or do we want to keep it generic and then, over time, as costs of things escalate or de-escalate, you know, maybe the allowance is changing or something? I mean, during the course of budgetary discussions, as long as there's uniformity, chairman, there shouldn't be an issue, but... And how many employees do we anticipate?
I believe from the last review done in September that there were somewhere between six and eight that were impacted, if I recall, or could be impacted. And again, there could be a need that comes out that's not being addressed right now, either that needs to be thrown into consideration, or there could be a use right now that's determined not to be needed in the future.
Right. I know our inspection services department has been advocating for an increase in stipend or mileage rate or something for the assistant inspectors.
That's correct.
For a number of years.
Yes.
This would not necessarily address that other than a vehicle may become available now as opposed to getting into reimbursement levels.
That's correct, yes. It would, this would not increase the allowances, and in some cases, it may decrease them.
In some instances, it does decrease the allowance. Yeah. You've had, excuse me, you've had preliminary discussions with the affected employees?
The employees were aware through their department heads that this was something that was being looked at, but in terms of the specific terms and commitments being made, it's not something I was comfortable doing until we had a first reading of the policy. But they've been aware since August or September that this was something that was in the works.
Good.
Again, through the department heads. I haven't spoken with each of them, but through the department heads, this was an identified matter that was going to be tended to.
Ms. Minapelli?
So there isn't a current written policy in place?
There is a current policy in place.
There is. There's a one-page policy in the Board of Selectmen's policy book. However, it doesn't address the financial terms with regard to providing an allowance if somebody's using a personal vehicle, for example, and that seemed to be the biggest source of concern. So what we've done here is we've taken the existing policy that's in the Board of Selectmen policy book and incorporated with not only vehicle use but reimbursement and employment term conditions that would be part of the policy.
Yeah, I think the IRS stuff wasn't in that one, right?
It may not have been.
That we were required to reference? Yeah. Any more questions?
Yes. So when you put this together, you worked with the, a lot of feedback from the department heads?
No. The feedback was between myself, the finance director, and the human resources director at this point, as well as the feedback we got from the board in February. Again, our intention was to make sure that we were addressing the concerns of the board prior to sitting down in a conversation with our employees in a formal fashion to discuss the implementation.
And for Mrs. Minapelli, the, a lot of the discussion generally takes place during the budgetary process where each department comes in, and there was a lack of uniformity. There was just a lack of uniformity across the board, so we charged the administration with, you know, trying to help with the policy that works and that minimizes what we would consider to be a reasonable rate of reimbursement for those employees that are forced to use their own cars. And there's been discussions now over the last couple of years, two or three years, in relation to creating some sort of a pool availability during the course of the day for people to use as opposed to their own vehicle.
Yeah. Any more questions? We're ready for that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the first reading of the vehicle use policy.
Second. You have a motion by Ms. Minapelli, seconded by Ms. Yule. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. One absence. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is to review the warrant article assignments.
Take us to the presentation, Mr. Chairman.
I know that's going to kick in at seven, is that correct?
Yes, we could also work from the mailed warrant book if that would be easier.
Um, I think it'd be easier if we just went through the paper warrant, if that's okay, and we'll bring up your presentation at seven.
Sure.
So roughly, it's about five warrant articles per person. If we divide up how many we have, I'm assuming we can roll all the revolving accounts up into one article. Is that safe to assume?
I've not sat through an annual town meeting yet, so I'm not sure whether you've done them all in one sitting or not, but...
We've had, we've had both motions prepared, but I believe we've been successful in wrapping them all up into one, one emotion.
Okay.
As long as Mrs. Minapelli doesn't mind doing the omnibus article.
No, we want to.
Which is the operating budget, that's all.
So we'll start with Article One. We got the FY 2015 budget amendment, and following that would be the snowing ice, and then the capital improvement, stay, appropriate the funds to the capital improvement stabilization fund. So I'd like to try to get the first person, maybe take those first three articles.
I can do that.
Mr. Yule?
Yep.
Okay. And then we got Article Four, which is to transfer funds to the water stabilization, and appropriate, Article Five, which is to appropriate the money to the stabilization fund, and then Article Six, appropriate the funds to the overlay deficit. I don't mind taking those three. We'll give all the hard ones to Mr. Maseri, since he's not here. And then we have the articles for select town officers, then hearing and acts on the reports of the town officers committees. I thought maybe those would be good articles for Mrs. Minapelli to read. Is that okay?
Sure.
So you have Articles Seven and Eight. Number Nine, authorize director of public works to ease, accept easements. Any takers?
I can do that.
Mr. Yule?
Yep.
Okay. And I believe you have one left, Jeff. And then authorize treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements, Article Ten. I know we're going to get... Let's see. I mean, can I make a recommendation? I mean, Mr. O'Larry, if you have no objections, do Articles Nine, Ten, and Eleven, and then we can give Mr. Maseri Articles Twelve and Thirteen.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If you want to do that, that's fine, but I did take number nine, not that...
Yeah, you can do that.
You just said Nine, Ten.
I was just have, it's just going up and back and forth to the podium, so we have yourself, then myself, and Kate, and then having you go back up for one article.
That's fine.
My thought was, and then trying to balance this out.
Perfect. I think that's good.
Mr. O'Larry would take Articles Nine, Ten, and Eleven, and we can give Mr. Maseri's Articles Eleven, I mean Twelve and Thirteen, which are, Twelve shouldn't be big, but Thirteen's obviously going to be the logic, one of the largest articles. Do you have any objections to that, Mr. O'Larry?
Of course not.
Okay, so Article Nine, Ten, and Eleven, Mr. O'Larry. And we're going to give Mr. Maseri's Articles Twelve and Thirteen. Article Fourteen is to reappropriate the borrowing proceeds for the DPW truck, and then the Martin's Pond.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah. I think probably a good idea for Steve to at least do the Martin's Pond.
Well, the Martin's Pond, Millfoil one, is actually seventeen.
Oh, is that my...
The reappropriation of the bond proceeds for fourteen and fifteen just basically frees up funds for other matters.
Right.
Where we spend it later on.
Yeah, it's just reappropriate, so...
I can do that.
Okay. You want to take those two, Jeff?
I'll take those two, yeah.
Beautiful. And I think that gives you at least five, Jeff. Article Sixteen, which is capital, it's a big one. Anybody interested, I'll take it. If nobody wants it, I don't care. Well, Steve, are you interested? You did it last year.
Because maybe whatever I want.
You did a pretty good job on it last year.
Okay, whatever you'd like.
Okay. And that gives you three now, I think, Steve? Or four?
Three, four.
Four. And then while you're up there, you just want to take the Martin's Pond one?
That'll be seventeen, sure.
Correct.
Yes.
That works out perfect.
Thank you.
And then you're done? Then eighteen...
I can go home after that?
Yeah.
I'm with you. I'm with you. I think I'm done, too.
Um, let's see. Then we have our eighteen, which is the retirement fund obligations, and then transfer funds to solid waste, and transfer funds to the OPEB. I was going to assign those to Mr. Maseri. No one had any objections? And then we're going to fund the Route 28 corridor study, which I'd like to take that if no board members have any issues.
Okay, other than CPC will be making the motion, though, right? Because they're sponsoring it.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. You know what? We don't have to take that.
You can give the board a recommendation.
Okay. That sounds good. I'll do that.
Yeah, but this is CPC.
Thank you.
Sponsor, right?
Yep. All right. Then we have the junk vehicles. I will take that one as well. I assume we're going to be learning about that one tonight, so I'll take that one.
Who was sponsoring that one?
Yeah. And then Article Twenty-three, we haven't voted on this yet, but I believe we're going to be passing over that article. Is that correct, Mr. Maseri?
I think that's what we voted on was to...
I didn't have, I only had, it's not in the book that we did, but I thought we voted to do that.
I thought we voted to pass over.
Nonetheless, maybe tonight, we should make it official. I don't believe the minutes showed that we did it either. But I was, Mrs. Minapelli, I'd like to give you that one, if that's okay?
Sure.
And, um, let's see. The youth services one? I will, I will take the youth services one. I'm not, I will put you up there on that one unless you are interested in trying to... It's up to you. We're going to be learn, we already voted on it. I believe you may touch a little bit upon that tonight, Michael, right? That particular one. It's up to you, Kate, if you want to read that motion at town meeting. I don't know if it's going to be too much, boy. I believe if there's going to be a presentation, it's going to be given by, I would assume, a member of...
The youth services committee. That's what I would presume, yes.
Okay.
I know Mr. Majane's prepared to speak to it.
If you're okay, if you're comfy, uncomfortable, I don't want to talk you into anything.
No, that's fine.
So we'll give you Articles Twenty-three and Twenty-four. And then I will take Twenty-five, if that's okay with everybody? And I'll, I'll do all the, while I'm up there, I can do all the revolving accounts. And then, Steve, you will do Article Thirty-five, I assume? Which is the, the street acceptance for the school?
Yes, please. Thank you.
And then the citizens petition, I assume they come up and take that motion?
You just want to make sure that the administration provides them with a legal motion that is acceptable.
I assume, I believe they're coming this evening, and then...
Yeah, I know, but I think generally the administration will draw up a motion so that it's in its proper form.
Yeah.
So there's less of an issue with town meeting where someone else is trying to scribble it out on a napkin.
You're speaking about Article Thirty-six?
No, no, no.
Or the street acceptance?
The, the driveway acceptance, yeah. That's, what number is that one?
Right, Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yes. But I was just saying, on the citizens petition, the administration, they want to assist in making sure that their motion is in proper order.
Right, okay.
So it gets properly considered.
So if my counts correctly, I think we all have an equal balance. And it brings us right to the 6:30, pretty much to the 6:30 timeframe to do the proclamations. I guess we have another couple of minutes till we get to that. Do we have to stop there?
It's not a noticed hearing. I mean, certainly, courtesy would say we stayed at 6:30. I could take up the town administrator's report, which is very brief this evening, if you'd like to take that out of order.
Yeah, we, well, you have a minute, so go right ahead.
I can do it in one minute. Written town administrator's report this evening, the DPW will host a hazard mitigation[1743.51] mitigation public meeting on May twenty-seventh at 6:00 PM here in Town Hall in Room Ten. Public is invited to attend to learn more about the Town of North Reading Hazard Mitigation Plan this evening. There's also information up on the town website. I will note that I think there was an email that went out by blast that stated that the meeting was this past Friday evening, which was not accurate. And if, for some reason, anybody showed up here at the Town Hall, my apologies. But again, it's May twenty-seventh. Secondly, and unfortunately, the written correspondence didn't make it into this evening's packet, but as the board members are aware, I did attend the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government Hearing on our legislation to remove a portion of Swan Pond Road from Conservation Commission Article Ninety-seven Protection, in an effort to essentially make it become officially on the record a public way for the public to use, as the public is using already today to access the land. I was, received a phone call from Representative Jones' office this, this morning that they were gonna be taking up the legislation, and I received an email this afternoon that it was passed to be engrossed in the House of Representatives, and now has moved over to the Senate. So it is moving through the legislative process. We did have a minor issue, which was that the warrant for the October town meeting referenced that the parcel address in question for the land where the right-of-way would be located was Fifty-Five Swan Pond Road, and it was actually Zero Swan Pond Road, but we received an opinion from Town Council that we forwarded to the committee that we believe has addressed the concern at this point in time. But again, good news that that legislation is moving to try to correct that, that situation. And I'll provide the board a written copy of my letter to the committee, as well as documentation that was provided in my administrator's report for the next meeting. And that concludes my comments for this evening. And I just thank Representative Jones and his staff for their efforts on that particular piece of legislation.
Thank you.
Just in relation to the hazard mitigation program?
Mm-hmm.
Can you expand on exactly what is it?
Sure. So the, the town is under guidelines provided by the state and federal government, providing a plan that identifies what could be identified as hazards to the health and safety of our community, and it could be anything from a, you know, particular critical resource such as a bridge or other infrastructure that we have. It's a plan for addressing a hazard, in other words, how will the town respond to a hazard, issues such as sheltering sensitive areas in town, sensitive populations that are in town. And really, we know, we, we know a lot about the community here in the Town Hall, clearly, but there's also an opportunity through the planning process for the public to step up and to say, have you considered this as a risk to the community? Have you prepared for this as something that might happen? Or have you considered doing that as a way to respond if something were to occur? This is really the public's opportunity to say, I've observed something here in town that I think we ought to be aware of and need to plan for. We encourage you to come forward and attend the meeting and bring it forth. If you can't attend the meeting, you can contact the town engineer. His contact information's on the DPW's page on the town website, and provide it in writing that way as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We have two proclamations that we are going to attend to now that are on the agenda. The first one is the Older Americans Month, and I believe we have a representative this evening, Mr. Wallner? We have, oh, there's a mic up here. If you, if you're gonna make any input, I'd ask you if you're gonna come to the mic, but what I'd like to do first is give us an opportunity to reread the motion, I assume, then we'll read the proclamation, and then have the discussion. Is that gonna be the right process?
Yep.
Well, I think you read the proclamation, and then we're gonna move to accept it.
Okay. Mr. Chair, um, Tom, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a notation, in addition, in addition to Mr. Wallner, who's come here this evening, the newest member of the Council on Aging is seated in the back. It's Fran Chaney. If you could raise your hand, raise your hand. You're sworn in on Friday, I think, right? Thank you for your willingness to serve and for coming to the, the meeting tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay.
The proclamation reads, whereas the Blue Star Memorial Byway Marker was...
Other one, other one. Another proclamation.
Proclamation for the older Americans, I'm sorry.
That's the other whereas.
Sorry. The proclamation reads, whereas the Town of North Reading includes three thousand and four citizens aged sixty and older, and whereas the Town of North Reading is committed to valuing all individuals and recognizing their ongoing life achievements, and whereas the older adults in the Town of North Reading play an important role by continuing to contribute experience, knowledge, wisdom, and accomplishments, and whereas recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments, and whereas our older, our older adults are active community members involved in volunteering, mentorship, arts and culture, and civic engagement, and whereas recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to allow older citizens to continue to flourish by emphasizing the importance of elders and their leadership by publicly recognizing their continued achievements, presenting opportunities for older Americans to share their wisdom, experience, and skills, recognizing older adults as a valuable asset in strengthening American communities. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectment of North Reading, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim May two thousand and fifteen to be Older Americans Month. We urge every citizen to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to the community. Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim the month of May two thousand and fifteenth as Older Americans Month.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Minapelli, second by Mr. Yule?
Yes.
And discussion? Any members wanna?
Richard.
I'll just say, so Maureen's here as well from the board on the council. So standing in for Mary Prenney, I just wanted to let you know that we are, through the Community Impact Team, we are actively organizing an effort for the North Reading. It's gonna be called the North Reading Senior Action, Action Team, and it's an attempt to get the seniors to get together, to create a viable voice within the Town of North Reading, and to improve the quality of life for seniors, and actually for the whole town as well. So I'll hand this to you later. It's just a little executive summary of what we're doing. We have subcommittees that are, we already have like twelve, thirteen people that are working within this group. We're looking to advertise it during the summer and get more members, and we're trying to make this as viable as possible. And the three, the three main goals is that we want the seniors to be connected to their community, we want seniors to live in their homes as long as they possibly can, and we want seniors to live with purpose. And they're gonna be standing up and doing that themselves. It's not gonna be a, it's gonna be them, it's not just gonna be an entitlement program. They have to stand up and do it themselves, and we're trying to organize and make that happen. So I've been kinda taking the lead in making that happen, but my goal is, within a year or two, to turn it over to somebody else and let them carry it. So.
Good luck with that.
That's my only discussion.
Turning it over, I mean. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Rich, could you just state your name?
Yes.
So folks at home could hear who you are?
Yeah, so Rich Wallner, live over at Lakeside, on Martins Pond, Lakeside Boulevard. So I'm on the Board Directors for the COA, I'm the Chair of the Social Services Action Team as part of the Community Impact Team, Chair of the Economic Development Committee, which is up and coming, and I guess I'm the founder of the North Reading Senior Action Team. So a few things in town. And I like to coach as well. Baseball.
Rich, I applaud you and your, your group. I've sat with you, obviously, on this one-on-one. I went through your presentation, and I give you a lot of credit, and I think it's wonderful that we have an opportunity now to really represent our seniors. I know we've invested in our senior center, and we tried to do the best we can, but this takes it to the next step. I think that's great. I think it's also, I heard your three goals, but I think there's a fourth one that you should consider, and, you know, we should recognize the investment that the seniors continue to make, even in their, after, when they're in their retirement age. And you look around, every social event that we try, that we have in this town, the seniors are there, providing help, providing service. You know, you go to the wine social, they're there serving food, not serving wine, we know better than that. Town election, you cannot have town election without our seniors. We would not be successful. As wonderful as a job Mrs. Stats and her staff does, without her senior volunteers, we would be DOA. We would not be able to achieve it. And I wanna give them creds, because they don't get enough. We have a new school today, two new schools, and a lot of it goes to, they stepped up. They, the seniors in this community stepped up for the schools because they knew it was important for our generation to come, and this is a wonderful step. We owe it to them, and I, I fully support what you're doing. It's one.
Anything we can do.
I applaud you.
And they pay a lot of the school bills. The reality is, they do. There are a lot of the tax bases, if we ever dug into that. So, but as a reminder, you know, Mary Prenney, her group, they have a lot of resources available for citizens. It's in the paper, they do a lot of advertising, you know, they, they reach out to people. That's available now. We're just trying to enhance it as much as we possibly can and bring it to a new level. So thank you for recognizing.
Thank you. Any more comments on this before we take a vote to accept the proclamation? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Mrs. Minapelli? He already signed it. Mrs. Minapelli will do the Blue Star Memorial Byway Maker.
Proclamation reads, whereas the Blue Star Memorial Byway Marker was projected by the National Garden Clubs Incorporated as a living tribute to the men and women of our nation's armed forces, and whereas it is fitting and appropriate that further recognition be accorded the services and sacrifices of our citizens so valiantly rendered, and whereas the Blue Star Memorial Byway Marker of Massachusetts is sponsored by the North Reading Garden Club in cooperation with the Town of North Reading. And now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the scope of the Blue Star Memorial Byway Marker be extended to include the Ipswich River Park area in the Town of North Reading, and be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be so noted in the minutes of the North Reading Board of Selectment on May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and a copy of the same be sent to the State Highway Commission as tangible evidence of the official petition to them to designate the above-mentioned route as part of the Blue Star Memorial Highway for due consideration and action by the Commission, and notification of such action to this organization. A Blue Star Byway Marker will be placed by the North Reading Garden Club in a dedication ceremony at Ipswich River Park on Saturday, May thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, at four o'clock PM. The public is invited. Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim that the scope of the Blue Star Memorial Byway be extended to include the Ipswich River Park area in the Town of North Reading, and to petition the State Highway Commission to designate Ipswich River Park as part of the Blue Star Memorial Highway.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Minapelli, second by Mr. O'Leary. Do we have a representative from the group? Would you like to come up?
This is Colburn.
If you'd just state your name.
Sure. Judy Colburn, co-president of the North Reading Garden Club, and on behalf of myself and Charlene Malik, the other co-president, and all the members and people who have supported us, selectmen, and Parks Department, we're thrilled that we will be installing this marker. And we met with Marty Tilton, Parks Department, with a couple of our members, and the marker is gonna be placed in our newly renovated garden, which is at the walkway to the river. The stone was placed today, and the marker will be put on shortly before the dedication. So we hope everyone will come down. We did receive a lot of donations from residents, we appreciate that, and we're also looking, if anyone else would like to donate, they can contact us. And I think there's been information in the newspaper, the transcript, and they've given us wonderful coverage, so thank you all for supporting this.
So Saturday, May thirtieth?
Saturday, May thirtieth, at four o'clock.
Four P.M.
We'll have a little reception at the gazebo afterward, but we'll be doing the installation and dedication at the garden.
Mr. Yule?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a wonderful thing that you do. I mean, it's a simple thing, it's a little thing, and people pass by that corridor and see what they see, and so it's, it's a little thing, but it's a big thing, and unfortunately, I can't be there that day. I'm away on business, but I wanna thank you for doing this.
Thank you. We started this about a year ago, and we're very pleased that the marker's gonna be placed in that garden that we started about two years ago. So it'll be a nice little quiet focal point for that spot. Thank you.
Any more comments, questions? Anybody? On the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We have about fifteen minutes before the informational hearing starts on the Warren Articles. Is there any other business we can attend, Mr. Yule?
Well, you have public comment.
Yes, we do. Anybody here for public comment? Nobody for public comment? Okay. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the board members, I'm sure, recall that we had had some discussion with regard to scheduling Kinder Morgan to come to town, and we had been targeting that this would be the evening that we would have them come, but ultimately, after consulting with the chairman and with staff here at the Town Hall, determined that this probably was gonna be a challenging venue in this particular room, and that this particular night would be a difficult evening. So we've identified a series of evenings that may work for purposes, logistically, from the town standpoint. I've forwarded those dates to the, to Kinder Morgan, but I'd like to vet with the board members if we could take this time availability for those evenings, if, if everybody is so willing. And bear with me while I pull up that, those dates, but I have a series of them. And Jane, I'll look to you if you could help me to track what works and doesn't. And so we were targeting seven o'clock PM for these evenings. Town meeting is June first. The first we were looking at were Wednesday and Thursday, the third or fourth.
I mean, don't not have it for me. I'm gonna be away at a destination wedding, unfortunately, so, but, you know, if the majority of the board can have it, I would say you have it.
Okay.
I know we've waited a long time to do it. Any board members object to the third or the fourth? And it'd be seven, you're gonna be doing it at the school location?
Yes, I've, I've asked the superintendent if he could identify available dates for the Distance Learning Lab. It seemed to be that that might be the appropriate place.
Definitely. Is it gonna be televised or recorded?
I think that that's something we would be able to do, yeah. We were originally planning to do it in the context of a regular board meeting, so it would have been televised, and it would have been available for review after the fact.
It would be good if we could at least have it recorded and shown at a later date. Michael, if I could just ask, what is the, what is the agenda that evening, and what are the goals you're trying to achieve that night?
So I've spoken with Representatives of Kinder Morgan a couple of instances, and they have asked if they could come in and give a general project update over the course of the first ten to fifteen minutes, which I told them I thought we would be amenable to. We then discussed the board being able to ask questions with regard to the response that they provided to our letter in April. And again, if you haven't seen it, the letter of response that came back from Kinder Morgan is in the Dropbox in the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Meeting, sorry, folder. So you'll be able to see what they responded to with the half dozen or so questions that we provided them. To provide an opportunity for any legislators who are there to answer any questions that the board may have, I know the board wanted to hear directly from the legislators, so we would invite them on the particular evening. Probably would give preference to our local legislators in terms of scheduling, but then proceed with the date based on their availability. And then open it up to residents to ask questions. That's the broad agenda. Kinder Morgan's been expressing to me a willingness to come and participate in a meeting that goes between an hour and an hour and fifteen minutes, and I told them that I thought that there was a desire to hear from them, and that, you know, certainly any time they could provide us would be well-received from our standpoint. But really, we wanna be able to have a dialogue with them about the need, about the project, about the concerns that we've identified, and to give the public an opportunity to ask questions.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Are the third and fourth the only dates that you're looking at?
No, there are additional. Oh, yeah, sure. So it was June third and fourth, and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of the following week, the eighth, ninth, tenth, or eleventh. I believe that Mr. Bernard has said that the school committee may be meeting on June eighth, so it may not be available to us on that evening. But just in case that day does become available, I thought I would ask the board members anyway, but it's unlikely that that day would work for the school department. Again, Monday through Thursday, June eighth through the eleventh at seven PM.
I know the ninth, the SSBC has a meeting, I believe, that usually runs to about seven or seven-thirty in that room.
Mm-hmm. That's right, yeah.
I don't have the ninth, and I would like to attend that hearing.
Is the tenth, you said the tenth as well?
Yep.
Which is wide open in my schedule.
Ninth, tenth, and eleventh.
Catherine, did you say the tenth was not good for you?
No, the ninth, the tenth is fine.
Okay.
Tenth would be okay for me also.
You said the tenth?
You said the 10th?
10th, and we can check with Mr. Mysterio, but 10th works for me too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then the last date was Monday, June 15th. Again, I've not spoken with the chair with regard to his intention, but that may be a meeting, a regular selectman's meeting that evening as well, just the 3rd Monday of the month.
The only other thing is that you were talking about giving preference to the local legislators, which is fine, but I would still like to have congressional representation from Representative Moulton's office, and Senator Marcus, Senator Warren's office too. So if you could try and coordinate that, I think it's important for the residents of North Reading, but of the area, to understand where they're coming from and report their position on the pipeline.
Okay, we can do that.
And then walk publicly here.
Well, we can coordinate that way, especially if we have multiple dates to pick from. I'd be happy to do that.
June 15th. Mr. Yul?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. And you might know the answer better than I do, Steve, but the Senate is currently going through a budgetary process.
This week they are, yes.
Right. So I know my conversations with Senator Tar, State Senator Tar, is that the only concern that he had is that as long as it's not, the meeting doesn't conflict with that process, he would have no problem making it.
This seems a little bit too soon for the legislation to finish their work. Generally, they leave it to the end of the month, just before the fiscal year's about to end, and then it was about to begin.
Right, right. Okay. And that's why I put that up. I mean, I know they're talking about it now, so, and maybe the 10th is a good date.
Okay. I will come coordinate with Senator Tar. And that was all of the dates. So thank you. I know that took some time, but I assure you it'll be valuable down the road.
If we could take maybe the opportunity now to get the presentations up and running, and if the folks from, for, that is sponsoring Article 37, I believe it is?
Ah, 36, I believe.
36. If you have a presentation and you wanted to load up on the, this would be the opportunity if you could work with the town administrators to get that going. And we'll take a five-minute recess while we set this up. Okay? Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending our informational hearing on the warrants. I'd like to, we're going to take some of the warrant articles out of order. So folks, I think a lot of folks are here for Article 36, and I'd rather not have you have to sit and go through all of the others. So we're going to move that one up first. But I'd like to just go through a few ground rules if we could, just to make sure everyone understands how the process is going to work this evening. I'm the vice chair. The chairman couldn't make it tonight, so I'm going to chair the meeting. I'm going to ask you to get recognized through me if you'd like to speak. I'd like to try to keep things in orderly fashion. I'd like to try to keep everybody's emotions in check if we could. I know this could become a particularly heated subject for many. We understand that, and we appreciate that, but we'd just ask that you get recognized through the chair, you step up to the podium, state your name and your address, and then please continue on once I recognize you with whatever comment or questions you may have. If you're going to answer a question that's being asked, I'm going to ask you to do the same thing, go up to the podium if you are the particular person that's going to be answering the question, and we'll just work that way. Any questions on that? Okay? So we'll do Article 36 first, and once we complete that, I'll give the opportunity for those folks that were here just for that article to exit the room, and then we'll start in the first warrant article and move our way through it. You need a few more minutes hooking up that?
Um, thank you.
Okay. Who is the sponsor for this particular article? If you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and stating your name, and you can start us off, and it looks like you have a presentation you'd like to give tonight?
I do. Is there any?
It's at the podium.
And before you start, board members, does anybody have any questions or are all good? All good? Okay.
Thank you. My name is Seth Passakarnas. I'm a resident of North Reading. I am the sponsor of this article, which is a citizen's petition to rezone parcels on Pluff Avenue and Fairway Road. I want to start by thanking the board of selectmen for allowing me the opportunity to present the citizen's petition tonight. I'm joined here by various members of our neighborhood, the Glucks, Kevin, Debbie, Pat Thorpe, Mike Kusakji, and there may be others who are filing in. This is an extremely important petition to us as residents and as neighbors, and we very much appreciate the time for you to listen to us. As a brief summary of my presentation, I'm going to do an overview of what we're looking to do here, and talk about the purpose of the petition, and then some highlights of the activities that are going on at 299 Main Street, which is the property right at the corner of Pluff Ave and Route 28. I want to start with the purpose of zoning. The primary purpose of zoning is to segregate uses that are thought to be incompatible. So for example, residential and industrial uses, or residential and commercial uses. In addition, in practice, zoning is also used to prevent new development from interfering with existing uses, or to preserve the character of a community. And that's why we're here today, is to preserve the character of our community, to preserve the character of our residential neighborhood. This is an overview of, this is actually a clean zoning map that shows the various zoning districts in North Reading. If we advance one slide, we are in the northwest corner of town, in between Martin's Pond and Hillview Golf Course. We are just off of Route 28, just south of the Andover Line. If I zoom in here, the area that we're looking at is right here on Pluff Avenue and Fairway Road, if I go back. This area in red is all highway business zoning. As you can see, Route 28 comes approximately here towards the left-hand side of this, so there's a sliver of highway business on the west side of Route 28. On the east side, there is a more substantial area that is zoned highway business. And we are a residential neighborhood running along Pluff Ave and then the development and Fairway Road, which is, as you know, is a 40B development. This is what we're seeking to rezone from highway business zoning to residential zoning. And again, this is just a overview of the assessor's map of the area that we're seeking to rezone. On the backside of us is Hillview Golf Course. A little bit about our neighborhood. We're seeking to rezone 16 parcels of land. There, in our neighborhood, there are 21 children ranging in age from 1 to 16 years old. We are pro-business. When Dunkin' Donuts was looking to develop, there was not resistance from us. We are pro-business. We are active members of the community in various businesses. This is not about restricting business. It's about preserving the integrity of our residential neighborhood. We strongly value our neighborhood. We like each other. We get along. Our kids all play together. And we're a dead-end street with a single means of ingress and egress. The only way to get in and out is through Pluff Ave. This is just an overview of our neighborhood. It's actually three different pictures. The one that I direct your attention to is the one on the right that shows our development, Fairway Road, as well as Pluff Ave running down towards Route 28. This is the Great American Tavern up here, and this is Dunkin' Donuts over here. So this is all, this is the area that we're seeking to rezone. It's all houses. Like I said, the purpose of our petition is to preserve our neighborhood and the integrity of our neighborhood. It's also about public safety. We don't want businesses to be further developing up Pluff Ave, and we want to protect our children and their ability to play out in the street and ride their bikes. We also want to protect our ingress and egress out of Pluff Ave. There's been various concerns raised by some of our neighbors on Pluff Ave about the noise that is emanating from a certain business at 299 Main Street, as well as some concerns that we have over debris and environmental concerns, which I'll touch on in just a minute. Finally, I just want to touch on the concept of the domino effect and the erosion of our neighborhood. What we're seeking to do here is stop business from expanding from highway business along 28 up into our neighborhood, up Pluff Ave. And the domino effect that I'm talking about is, once the next property is sold and developed, then there's an incentive for the next property to be sold to that same person and to be further developed, and for there to be continued erosion into Pluff Ave and into Fairway Road. We want to stop that before it starts. We request your support here tonight and at the town meeting on June 1st. We believe that our petition is consistent with the purpose of zoning bylaws, that it recognizes the reality of the situation, and that the 16 parcels that we're seeking to rezone are already residential, owner-occupied homes. And we think that this preserves the neighborhood and promotes safety. Why not? One of the arguments that I've heard in opposition to our petition is that there's limited highway business zoning in town. Why should we take away highway business? Quite frankly, we believe that that ship has sailed with respect to Pluff Ave and Fairway Road, and that there are already residential houses built there, and we don't believe it would be consistent to change that. Pluff Ave has existed as residential housing for 80 years. Fairway Road was developed in the late 1990s. Again, we don't want to see continued erosion of our housing in favor of commercial developments up Pluff Ave. We don't think that that outweighs the numerous benefits of changing this to residential Finally, this petition will not impact any properties on Route 28. We're not seeking to take away any highway business zoning on Route 28 itself. We're just looking up Pluff Ave where there are existing residential homes. I do want to touch on what's happening at the corner property at 299 Main Street. It was purchased in February 2014 by T. Zanelli Realty LLC, and it executed a long-term lease with Zanelli Excavating. I believe there's also a long-term lease with TZE Contractor Supply. And they began operating both a construction rental business on the corner of 28, as well as a construction excavating company, using Pluff Ave as their means of ingress and egress. So this is a picture actually before the property was purchased. This is 299 right here. What's happening now is that you're seeing TZE Contractor Supply renting construction equipment out of this building here on the left. You may have driven by and seen boom lifts parked outside and other construction equipment out there for rent. What they're doing, what the excavation company is doing is they're not using 28 as their ingress and egress, they're using Pluff Ave over here. So this is just a slightly different angle. We're looking up north, up Main Street, I'm sorry, up 28. They're using Pluff Ave to get back here, behind this white building, to this shed and to another building that they've built there, a storage shed. Some of the things that I want to highlight for the board of selectmen, they're renting construction equipment on Route 28. At any given time, they have two to three dump trucks, two to three front-end loaders, one to two flatbed trucks. And they've built a large bay in which they're storing what we believe to be excavation and construction material. There have been complaints by some of our neighbors on Pluff Ave about the noise and debris. And I just want to touch on unpermitted site improvements. We contacted the building inspector in the town recently and asked for a copy of any permits that they had for some of the improvements that were made to the property. They were not able to provide us with a single permit for anything that's happened on the property. Now, I'm not sure if permits have been pulled, or if it's just the fact that these improvements were made without a permit. What you're looking at the top left-hand corner is the storage shed that they've built. Again, I don't know if this is safe, if this is permitted or not. At the bottom, you're looking at the fence that was built basically right on the straight line with Pluff Ave. I'm not sure what process was followed for that. And then finally, in the top right corner, you can see where they're parking some of their trucks. Behind that fence is a catch basin that was recently installed. We actually sit in an aquifer protection area. It's come to our attention that when that catch basin was installed, we don't know where that runs to. We don't know what's going into that catch basin, other than the fact that immediately adjacent to that catch basin, there is building materials being stored in this shed, whether it's salt, whether it's material that's been excavated off of somebody's property. And we have a genuine concern about whether there are environmental issues associated with this. I do want to say that we met with the owner of 299 Main Street during this process to see if there was something that could be worked out. And what's clear is that he's a very nice gentleman. We're very nice people. We don't see eye to eye because we have very diverging interests. We want to protect our families and our properties and our residential neighborhood. He's interested, I'm sorry, he's interested in running his business and developing the property. Right now, he intends to expand to four Pluff Ave, which is the next property up Pluff Ave. He intends to develop that property for commercial excavation and to run a construction business. He intends to erect what we believe, based on our view of the plans, is an enormous two-bay structure where you would be able to drive in dump trucks and excavation equipment and store it inside. And we estimate that it's going to cover 50% of the footprint of that property. It's going to be a remarkable change to what's there now, which is a single-family residential home. Again, the company that owns this property is a realty company. This is pulled from the Secretary of State website. They're in the business of owning, operating, managing, remodeling, expanding, holding, refinancing, et cetera, interests in land. They're a developer. And what they want to do is develop this property, and we don't want that to happen for the reasons that I outlined above. One thing I want to touch about, touch on about highway business zoning, and I pulled this from what I believe is the most recent version of the North Reading regulations on zoning. Highway business zoning is for, quote, "businesses involved in retailing services and amusement and recreation activities." I don't believe that TZ Excavating or Zanelli Realty are involved in either of these. All uses are restricted to closed buildings except for drive-up windows where specifically approved. I don't think that these businesses are in compliance with that aspect of highway business zoning. Outdoor storage of materials and supplies is prohibited unless specifically approved. Again, we weren't able to get any records of specific approval to store these types of materials, so we don't believe that they're in compliance with this provision of the zoning regulations. Prohibited uses include heavy construction equipment rental or leasing, and uses by a special permit only include landscaping services, lumber, or other building material dealers. Again, we tried to get a permit of any type. We weren't able to do so. I'm not sure if those exist or not, but we do have a genuine concern as to whether this business is operating without any permits. In summary, this issue is extremely important to us. We, there are many of us here from our neighborhood tonight, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to present this issue to you. Again, to summarize, we think that this petition is in the best interests of the entire public and all the citizens of North Reading, because it maintains the purpose of the zoning bylaws. It doesn't impact any zoning, highway business zoning on Route 28. It preserves the residential integrity of our neighborhood, and we think that it's good for public safety. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more presentations that are going to be made on this article? If not, I'm going to ask the light be turned back on. The folks from, would you like to, you want to make any statements or anything?
We'd like to be heard if there's no more comments.
Please. If you want to have, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium, and then we'll take questions. And I'm going to try to, I'd like to try to keep this, you know, another 15, 20 minutes or so, but we have a lot on the agenda, and we still have an 8:00 agenda item we have to get to, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. My name is Dawn Bornstein. I'm a zoning and land use attorney. My office is Johnson &amp; Bornstein. We're located in downtown Andover. I represent Mr. Zanelli and his business is here tonight. I want to thank Attorney Passakarnas for his presentation to the select people and your time and your indulgence of us tonight to present Mr. Zanelli's take on this proposed zoning change. I guess I have a few points to make, and I'll make them as quickly as I can. First, the first point is really an issue of fairness and expectations. Mr. Zanelli came to this property, 299 Main Street, knowing he was buying a commercially-zoned property, knowing he was in the middle of a commercial district, hundreds of feet away from the nearest residentially-zoned property. Most of the folks who live in that area and live in that neighborhood, they came to that area knowing, or certainly they should have known, that they were buying in a commercial district, a commercial district that it was sort of taken over by a 40B comprehensive permit. That comprehensive permit's in the record of all their, at least as to the 40B-built homes, is in the record of the registered deeds. It spells out very specifically that a waiver was being granted. Homes are not, are prohibited from being built in the highway business district. That district has been zoned like that since 1968. That comprehensive permit sort of stepped on the town zoning and allowed a waiver for residential homes to be built in the district. The second point I'd like to make is that the town has recognized for a long time the shortage of commercial district and commercially-zoned property in the town. I went back to the 2004 master plan. Even the 2004 master plan was specifically looking for, and adopted a policy, to identify vacant properties, single-family residential uses, and older businesses along Route 28 for growth potential to meet future market demands. That was in 2004. Actually, at that time, I was living in town myself and remember the conversation. In 2015, just recently, there's been a strategic plan that's been issued by the town, and that strategic plan specifically talks about the need for commercial development, the need for commercial tax base. And I'm sure this is all well-known to you folks. I don't need to lecture you on it. To take property out of the commercial district and put it into the residential district goes against sort of general town concepts and general town planning and strategies that last that last, you know, decades of trying to develop the commercial district. And the town's done very well with that. When I was living in town 10, 15 years ago, compared to what Route 28 looked like then, compared to what it looks like today, there's been a lot of progressive development, there's been a lot of properties brought up, there have been many single-family residential structures have been, have been taken down or replaced with quality, quality commercial development. And that's appropriate, and that's what the town planned for in 1968. And we're still seeing that plan being developed along. To rezone a chunk of this area as residential, particularly the area in closer to Route 28, and very specifically the parcel of Buddy and Mr. Zanelli's property, is just bad planning. It takes a piece of property that has existing commercial development, significant commercial development on three sides, and rezones it residential. It's got a smaller, older residential home on that. What's that going to do to that property? It's going to lock that property, it's an existing state. No one's going to come to North Reading and put money into that property if it's zoned residential, and not just residential, your most restrictive residential, residential A. You're going to create a non-conforming lot, require it to remain residential, even though it has commercial development all around it. What's going to happen to it? It's going to languish, just like it is. And there are several potential unintended consequences from this proposal. And I haven't heard them addressed at all in the presentation, but they certainly deserve to be addressed. First off, it makes all those homes in that area, none of them, or very, I shouldn't say none of them, but I don't, very few of them will comply with the residential A requirements. So, it would immediately make all those properties, many of those properties, non-conforming for dimensional requirements. Where they would comply with dimensional requirements, many of them today. Additions, garages, any sort of improvements to those properties would now be potentially subject to variances, would potentially be prohibited. It could constrain, in fact, the growth of the very neighborhood they're looking to protect, or the improvement of that neighborhood over time. Additionally, there's the issue of the comprehensive permit. The one zoning waiver that was granted for that comprehensive permit project was to allow the residential use in the commercial district. If you now take that restriction away, now all those residential uses are allowed as of right in that rezoned district. I'm not quite sure what that does to that comprehensive permit. There is case law that exists under comprehensive permit, that if you don't need the comprehensive permit anymore, if you don't need the zoning relief, you've got through the comprehensive permit, you might not have to comply with the rest of it. Meaning, they might not need to provide the affordable units that are part of that project today. By rezoning a residential and allowing them to do as of right what they needed to get done through the state-mandated 40B, I'm not sure what that does for those affordable units. And I'm not sure who ends up with that money, but it's a question that should be, should be asked of the petitioners. Another sort of dangerous and unintended consequence is this certainly opens up the door for any residential owner in town who's either in a commercial district or butts a residential district, if they don't like the business that's next to them at that time, to bring before this board and bring before the town meeting a rezoning to address what really is an enforcement issue potentially, or is a typical zoning or inspectional services issue. The Route 28 corridor is loaded with businesses and commercial up front with homes behind them that are, some of them are in the commercial district, some of them are just outside the commercial district. If you're going to allow this petition to go forward, why wouldn't you do that all along the business district? And the town is its wisdom, zone that side of Route 28 to be somewhat broad, to allow for more profitable, more expansive commercial district. If you're going to narrow that all down to tiny little parcels that's only with frontage on 28, you're going to restrict that. And you're going to do the opposite of what the town has been trying to do since 1968, and succeeding at, which is bring robust commercial activity to that corridor. The current issues, the current issues before you, most of the presentation you've just heard had nothing to do with a zoning change. Had nothing to do with planning, had nothing to do with solid land use strategy for the town. What it had to do with was complaints about a single business. If this business is operating in violation of the zoning code, which I think was suggested during that presentation, then bring it to the building inspector. If there's a code violation, then bring it to the code enforcement officer. Don't rezon the area. Once you've rezoned an area, downzoned it to residential, it's very, very hard to bring that back to commercial. I'm sure many of you are familiar with that. Look around in town and find an area where you're going to take residential and make it commercial, it's hard to find. So, once this rezoning, if it passes and it goes through, don't expect it to come back commercial anytime soon. And what's it being brought to this board for? What's it going to be brought to town meeting for? To address a single business, a single parcel. And apparently, claims of zoning issues and code enforcement issues. And bring them to the code enforcement officer. And last, and I think this is the most important, your current zoning has a mechanism to address this very circumstance already in it. If Mr. Zanelli wants to expand his business onto four Pluff Ave., and he wants to use that property, property like it's zoned currently for commercial use and to expand his business on it, he's going to have to go to the CPC. He's going to have to get site plan approval. You know, one of the first things the CPC is going to ask him, what are you doing for screening the existing residential homes? How are you going to operate your site? How are you going to get trucks in and out? Where are you going to store your materials? What kind of building are you going to put them in? Are you in compliance with all the zoning regulations? I've appeared before this CPC many times. The North Reading CPC is a technical board with many longstanding members who take their planning obligations very serious, elected by the town, unlike many towns. And they take their obligations very seriously. If you think they're going to allow the expansion of this business without considering all the same things that were presented, I think that's, I think that's wrong. I think the CPC process would very much address exactly what we're doing here. This issue belongs in front of the CPC in their site plan review process, not in front of town meeting for zoning change, something that's going to be irreversible because you're going to, because we're looking to address a single business on a single day, operating like they are today. What Mr. Zanelli wants to do is improve that property. He's been in business for 12 years, he's been in business, brought his business North Reading a year ago. He's an experienced business person. He wants to improve that property. He started to make some improvements, he's put up a new fence that has privacy screening on it. He's made some improvements to the yard area to give him a little more space to operate. He's been successful there. We should applaud that. And under your zoning, and if he acquires this neighboring property, he can expand with the town's oversight under the CPC and let him do a quality job. Let the CPC put the landscaping requirements on him. Let the CPC put the screening requirements on him. And that's the process that exists. And that's a reasonable way forward, not a zoning change to make an sort of irrevocable decision to take this out of commercial development, deprive the town of that tax base. I appreciate your time.
Do you want to ask a question?
Do you mind if I ask just a couple of questions?
Absolutely, that's what you.
Just, if you don't mind, you said Mr. Zanelli acquired it a year ago? The property a year ago?
I believe approximately a year ago, yes.
Do you know what the use of the property was before his acquisition?
I believe before his acquisition, and Mr. Zanelli and his girlfriend, they're off.
I'm going to have to ask you to come to the podium, I'm sorry. Just to recognize yourself.
I wanted to come anyway.
My name is Teresa Chini, and I have been in business at 299 Main Street since 1981. My family previously to me owned the property. And my brother Walter, his wife Peggy, owns four Pluff Avenue. And they sold ice machines commercially, is what they did. They had a distributorship, they were called Northeast Equipment. They had 18-wheelers that also used Pluff Avenue as their, in and their out. And what they're calling a garage was where they stored their ice machines and their equipment. The difference in their equipment versus Zanelli's equipment is my brothers drove vans, and he drives pickups. They have large equipment. My brothers had, I can't think of the name of the trucks. There was trucks there all the time. But there was 18-wheelers that made deliveries at least once a week. They usually traveled across the country. And many times, they sat in the parking lot overnight because when they got there from Wisconsin, it was at a different time than it was when the business was open.
I was just curious, because it doesn't sound like it had an excavation or construction use prior to his acquisition.
That's correct.
They sold ice machines commercially. They were a distributorship of ice machines with, yes, they did have trucks. Yes, they did do drive large equipment. As I just stated, there was many 18-wheelers who delivered there all the time. And also, while I'm here, I would like to say that there already is commercial zoning on Pluff Ave., three Pluff Ave. is Dunkin' Donuts. And after three Pluff Ave. was put in with all the traffic that it brings in with it, they also allowed them to build a garage on that property many years later. I don't know exact years, but like I say, I've been there since 1981. And my sister-in-law is the abutting property, which was always meant to be together. 29, that's why my family bought both pieces of property as a commercial lot to do with as they wanted. And that was their intention when they sold it to Mr. Zanelli.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
There's one more thing I wanted to say. When the town allowed Dunkin' Donuts to build on both pieces of property, on the main, 297 Main Street and on three Pluff Ave., they built a large building on three Pluff Ave., they required Dunkin' Donuts to provide for the children. They asked them to build and maintain a sidewalk. They asked them to clearly put where the bus stop is, and it has nothing to do with the other side of the street. They built a sidewalk, and they have a clearly marked bus stop for all of the children. And three Pluff Ave. has much, much traffic that goes in and out there all day, including the Dunkin' Donuts 18-wheeler trucks, because that's the only way they can get in. If you look at the front of Dunkin' Donuts, 18-wheelers can't just pull in there and drop step off. So, the children have been provided for by the town when they gave them that permit to build the Dunkin' Donuts. Thank you.
Yes, please, Kate. Kate, go right ahead.
Is there a waiver in place or a special permit in place for him to operate an excavation business at that location?
I don't believe there is, and I should have started my presentation with this. Mr. Zanelli does not agree with many of what has been stated as facts as the way that property is operated. He operates principally an equipment rental company.
That's what I was going to ask you, does he do any excavation operations at that site?
Storage of equipment, storage of materials. There's equipment, there are, there are material bins, which you saw pictures of.
That was that big shed with the covering?
Yes. But all that is related to the equipment rental and contractor supply company. And in fact, those bins specifically are intended with the addition of the four Pluff Ave. property, to be pushed back away from Pluff Ave., to be pushed out of sight of any of the residential homes, either folks traveling up and down that street or from the homes themselves, to be pushed to the back of the property and screened appropriately. And that would be something that would be under the purview of the CPC to control that and condition it.
Any more questions on the board papers?
Well, I was looking for some public input.
Yeah.
I just have one more.
Go ahead.
I just want to.
Oh, this is, what we have for?
You talked a lot about this in terms of your presentation, and I'm wondering if there was any kind of a study, whether it was a formal or informal, of what the impact of that zoning change would be to the businesses in that area. Beyond what you're speculating or suggesting, was there any actual study done of that?
There has been no formal study. I've certainly reviewed the proposal, reviewed zoning bylaw, walked the property, walked the neighborhood. I mean, in short, it's bringing the residential district right up tight, right up next to all the existing commercial business in that area. It's taking the dividing line between residential and commercial, and bringing it right up tight to the existing commercial. So, that has, if we're, if our intent is to avoid conflict between those uses, I think you're actually creating that conflict. You're both creating that conflict, and you're depreciating the property that's going to be left on the residential side of the line that's commercial now. I mean, zoning has a lot of, inherent in the zoning process is when you zone an area commercial, there's going to be some conflicting uses. And over time, those non-conforming uses, well, the market will eventually bring them into conformity. And that's exactly what would happen here with that four Pluff Ave. property.
I'd like to hear from some of the residents if they're interested in speaking. If you could come up to the podium and state your name. You're naming your address if you wouldn't mind, please.
Debbie Adams, 7 Pluff Ave. I wanted to just make a comment about the Dunkin' Donuts 18-wheelers. I have never seen one drive down Pluff Ave. They go in the Dunkin' Donuts entrance and go around the Dunkin' Donuts building. So, that has never been an issue for me. Another part about Dunkin' Donuts, traffic going into the building where their offices are, those are all cars. Those are all people who are going to their offices to work. They're driving cars, they're not driving excavation equipment or flatbeds to pick things up. Dunkin' Donuts does provide a sidewalk area for the kids to get on and off the bus. But in the winter, and this one especially was bad, it wasn't available. So, we had to take our children to the bus in our cars so they were safe. That became an issue with our neighbors on Main Street, parking too close to their property, or near their mailbox, or whatever the issue was. As far as I'm concerned, if I'm parked in the street so that my children get on and off the bus safely, I don't see why it's an issue at seven o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning. When business is going on during the day, I totally appreciate the fact that they don't want us blocking their parking spaces. And I have no problem with that either. I'm more concerned about the safety of my kids, the quality of their life outside, playing when it's nice out, getting to and from school, and not have to worry about trucks coming up and down the street. And, you know, Dunkin' Donuts as well has an in and out for themselves. This business is only going to have the in and out on our street. I live a little bit down from there, I'm not right next door, but it still affects all of us. I, you know, I'm very uncomfortable with the trucks and the kids and, you know, the stress that it's caused us trying to get them to and from because we can't park our cars anywhere. On the side of Dunkin' Donuts, there are no parking signs. You can't park on that side of the street. We can't park on the other side of the street because they don't want us to park there to get our kids on and off the bus in the bad weather. What other choice do we have? The snow mountains are 18 feet high this winter, and everybody knows that, so. I mean, I know it was an extreme winter, but, you know, every year's going to be another issue.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you.
I'm Randy DiLoreto, 299 Main Street. As far as the trucks, I've asked the truck drivers, we, sometimes, we don't know who's coming to deliver. It could be one carrier, it could be another carrier. I don't know the trucks that are coming. If I see them coming, I try to stop them and tell them not to go down there. When we first opened, that's what, you know, Northeast had done in the past. They told them to go down, turn around, and come back. So, that's what we had told them in the beginning, and I think some of the neighbors had said they didn't like that, so I try to stop them as much as I can. Sometimes I don't see them before they're already down the street turning around. I've asked them to pull into our lot. I've even backed them out onto 28 so they didn't go down there. We try. As far as parking, I honestly, it doesn't bother me if you want to park in my lot when nobody's there. I don't care at all. But it's the blocking both sides of the street, and then, you know, they give us grief for a truck being there for 15 minutes, half in our parking lot and a little bit on the street. It's just one of those things, I don't care if you want to park there, it doesn't bother me at all. I would rather the kids not stand on 28 either, because if you've seen the cars that go by in the morning, they're going pretty fast. So, it's kind of, I have no control over the trucks. Dunkin' Donuts, that's their trucks, that's their truck drivers. They know I don't have any control over Conway freight, or this freight, or that freight, of how, you know, how they pull in. I'll try to stop them as much as I can if I catch them when they're coming down the street, and tell them not to. That's all I can do.
Thank you. Sir.
My name is Patrick Thorpe, I live at 4 Fairway Road. And I just wanted to talk, this is about, to us, the neighbors, the people that live in that area, about preserving, preserving the neighborhood that we live in. You know, there's issues and concerns with regards to the safety of the children. There are a lot of young children that live in the area. My children are a little bit older, so they're not running around playing as some of the other kids in the neighborhood. But this is about that. And it's also about preserving the character of the neighborhood and the environment. And, you know, I heard a comment that highway business zoning came into effect in 1968. But I just want to say that Pluff Ave. as a residential neighborhood has existed since the 1930s. And to say that it's a commercial zone completely misrepresents the character of that neighborhood right now. And that's what we're trying to preserve, and that's what I'm here for tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more brief comment. We understand that when Dunkin' Donuts was developed, 4 Pluff Ave was against that development for obvious reasons. It's right near their house. And when the Great American Tavern was developed, residents of 4 Pluff Ave were against that development for, again, the obvious reasons. Now that they stand to sell their property to substantial profit, now we hear them up here in favor of commercial development and allowing that type of expansion. This is the first shoe to drop. We strongly disagree with the characterization that this should not be a zoning issue. This absolutely should be a zoning issue. This is where it needs to stop right now before the next domino falls and before businesses continue to expand up Pluff Ave, as you're seeing here tonight. That is the ultimate desire, is to continue to work their way up Pluff Ave. The only other thing that I want to mention, this lot that he's operating an excavation company out of is about the size of a postage stamp in comparison to some of the trucks that are on that lot. There is no way he can effectively operate a construction company on that lot, which is why he has his trucks out onto Pluff Ave, why he's backing them in, and why he's loading materials and taking them in and out of Pluff Ave. It is not an appropriate use for that property, and it is only going to get worse when they try to expand onto the next piece of property, which is equally as narrow. Thank you.
Does anybody know what the square footage of 299, what's the square footage?
20,000 feet.
Thank you.
In 4 Pluff Ave, it's how many square feet?
17.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I could just hand out to the board, I just brought a couple area photographs. It shows the whole area. It might help with that.
That's fine. Okay.
I think Mike.
Michael, please. And I'm going to try to, I would like to try to wrap up the resident input, give the board members a chance to ask some questions, give our CPC members that are in attendance this evening to ask a few questions, and then try to wrap this up.
Okay. Michael Kuszczyk, 1 Fairway Road, North Reading. My major beef right now is the council for Andover stated that those bins were very ambiguous. There's nothing ambiguous about it. They contained salt, dirt, and mulch, and a lot of sand during the wintertime that they were distributing to other companies. So, there wasn't really anything ambiguous. I'm not sure if that wasn't very clear when you visited the site in the wintertime, or you saw the signs that stated salt for sale or sand for sale, but it was very clear to us what was happening on that particular property. And I'm not sure about the legality of the drainage on that particular property in an aquifer area either. So, with that being said, the ingress and the egress on Pluff Ave is unacceptable when you have two neighborhoods that have to drive through that area. It's not safe for the kids. It's not safe for the homeowners that have to exit and enter that area. Most companies on Route 28 have an ingress and egress that are right on highway business, Route 28. So, you're asking us to accept an ingress and an egress that are abutting neighborhoods and homes that have children in them. And that is just not acceptable to me at this point. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. CPC members, do you have any questions for any of the folks that are in attendance this evening? You want to make any kind of input? You're welcome to step up to the podium.
Just a quick question.
If you could come to the podium, only because the folks at home can't hear you.
Okay.
And if you could just state who you are.
From CPC, how many of these lots are owned by people who are not interested in having So, it's simply the question of whether or not these people's rights are being tread on by this. In my opinion, the rezoning of the rest of those lots, those residential ones, is fine. I mean, I think the 40B, I think it is correct, that leaving it as a 40B offers a protection that you might be jeopardizing. I think Town Council alluded to that as well. But, to rezone them residential, they're already, they're residential now. They're going to be residential forever, and to keep them that way, that's fine. My only concern would be if you take somebody else's lot and you rezon it against their wishes, that's kind of contradictory. You want to rezone for your wishes, but you want to take theirs and rezon it for your wishes. So, I think those people need to be considered as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from, sorry, that's right, the building inspectors here, so I can, there's been some question as to whether or not the current use is legitimate under its current operation or not. It doesn't appear as though they've been before the CPC for site plan review and whatever they're doing there. So, first of all, you know, from administration staff and the building inspector, you know, what's occurring there? Is it a legitimate use of the property, the current thing, you know, the structure, there appears to be a temporary structure that's imposing upon the visual sites of the neighborhood? And then, well, I'd like to hear building inspector first.
Mr. DeCola, if you wouldn't mind, I have a very similar question, because when we were bringing Caterpillar into town, I went to all of the CPC meetings, and I, and the CPC, I give them a lot of credit. They really harped on how concerned they are about that type of equipment coming on and off that property, and I think they did an excellent job in managing that. But I see some of that same equipment here, which gives me some of that concern, and so I am interested in hearing an answer, if you have one, for Mr. Elyer's question.
The building department, you know, we went out there and reviewed it. The lot is maxed out, but it's conforming. It's commercial. It's very consistent with what was going on there before. I even had ZBA go out and look at it to see if there was any violations. They said there weren't any. The selling of the sand and salt was allowed. He sells it in retail. He uses it for his own use. The temporary structures, we have those all over town, just to keep it dry. Hopefully, they come down, and, you know, maybe eventually a variance or a permanent structure would be put up. But obviously, that's being weighted on depending on the property next to it. Mr. Zanelli has taken permits. I don't know why copies weren't provided. He's taken at least three, two signed permits. He's taken a permit for a retaining wall, so he does come in for building permits. I did get some information from the assessors office that I'd like to share. There's 5,634 parcels in North Reading. Out of that, 249 are in highway business. Out of the 249, there's 50 single-family residential homes on that, bringing it down to 199. Six of the parcels have condos and apartments on them. So, now you're down to 193, which is 3.4 percent of the parcels in town that is highway business right now. Any other questions?
Well, so the excavators, the loading and the unloading the excavators, there isn't a specific use for that? Isn't there a specific zoning approval you have to obtain?
No, that's his own equipment. So, I mean, and it's a mixed-use property. I believe there's two apartments upstairs, too. If those were to go out and he was, he changed it to office, they wouldn't be allowed back in, because it's highway business. You're not allowed to have any apartments or single-family houses in highway business. So, but it is, it's maxed out, and that's what's happening.
I just, I'm a little confused about your comment. Is it his excavation, his excavation equipment, because it's his, they can be on the property, but I thought they were leasing?
He rents. He rents small, well, what the town considers small rental. We checked into that. The zoning is for heavy construction equipment, what you'd see on Milton Cat. On, that's not allowed in highway business.
So, what is this here?
That's a backhoe.
Right, is that a piece of excavation equipment? That's small?
Yeah, looks like a backhoe.
So, you consider that a small?
That's his own, that's his own equipment. I believe it's his own equipment.
Excavator.
Excavator?
Yeah.
And that's a rental equipment?
Yes, it is.
So, that's what you consider a small?
Yeah, that's not the heavy, and I don't know the numbers of them, the stuff that Milton Cat has, the heavy equipment. We did check into it.
It looks the same to me, but I don't know. I'm not in the industry, so.
Okay, that's a small machine.
Do the bylaws call for, you know, GBWs on equipment as to what's heavy, what's considered heavy equipment and what's not considered heavy equipment?
It's in the, what is it, the NCI, we have the, yeah.
I'm sorry.
The standard book?
Standard industrial classification.
We look everything up in that. Everything has a number, every use.
I'm sorry, but there is, don't worry, that, that is small use. That is not a small piece of equipment. Kate?
Where is, I know, I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions.
Oh, no, this is for, ask as many as you have.
You said he pulled a permit for a retaining wall. Is that what we're looking at right there, that shed, that?
No, the retaining wall is in the back on the tavern side.
So, you've inspected that and approved the permits?
Did inspect it, yeah, permit was issued, and it was finalized.
What about this, though? What is that that we're looking at? Because that looks like a structure that was built. Did he pull a permit to build that?
No.
What is that?
That's a temporary structure to keep the sand and salt dry, at least over the winter. I don't know if it didn't work. I'm surprised it stayed up with 10 feet of snow.
So, you don't require a permit to?
We don't, we have them all, I mean, this is on a commercial use, but if you drive around town, everybody's got them in their driveways for their cars. They throw up the green.
No, I'm actually talking about the stone portion of that.
Oh, the stone portion, yeah. They're just, they're just blocks that separate the sand and stone. It's not a retaining wall. It's not holding back any filth, except for the inside, as long as it's under three feet.
And just to, I want to just, for my own clarification, yeah, I know you're talking about highway business, commercial business here. What's the parcel behind it that they want to expand to? What's currently there, a house?
A house, small ranch.
So, it's, it's a hall, it's a house, even though it's in central business. So, the other, my other question is, he can have equipment that he can rent. He just cannot perform excavation on this site. That would have to be in a different zoning district, right?
Yeah, I mean, there wouldn't be any, you know, unless you pulled a building permit, there wouldn't be any need to do any excavation on the site itself continuously.
Do you know the width of, I know I'm, that's putting you on the spot, but do you know the width of Pluff Ave?
No, I don't.
Kate, if you look at the map here.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, click the next to last page of it. Three or four back.
Fantastic.
But it's just, it's got a little, little map.
So, you know that?
I've actually been, I've been down there. My daughters-in-law live on Fairway, so I know the area quite well. But I'm just curious what the width?
Mr. Bellin.
Doesn't seem like a very thick.
The width of the?
88.5.
88.5.
Okay, that's pretty.
So, my question on the temporary, so how long is temporary structures are? Is there, do we have it in our bylaw, what that timeframe is?
We don't. Usually, it's within, between six months and a year.
And to my rec, if I might?
Yeah, please.
That side doesn't have sidewalk, right, on that?
No, it's on.
It's on the Dunkin' Donuts building side.
Okay.
This side here on the top side faces the home, I believe, at 4 Pluff Ave.
Yeah, I believe it's over here.
As far as the storage of material, the types of materials that are being stored there, and it is over the aquifer, we regulate that generally?
It depends on the use of it. That's why I sent the ZBA up there, because I had questions on it myself, and because they're such small quantities, and it's in and out, they said that would be allowed. I mean, if I was to bring my pickup truck up there and I say, "I want to load the sand," he's going to sell it to me, and then I'll take it back to my house.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Yor.
Yes, I'm not sure if this is your venue or not, but from what I, I'm trying to tie in some what I consider loose ends. At the beginning, it was stated by the lawyer, and I'm sorry if I didn't catch your name, sir, the lawyer for Zanelli's?
Don Markston.
No, I'm sorry, no, the lawyer for Zanelli.
Mr.?
Zanelli.
Don Markston.
Don Markston?
Markston.
Markston.
Okay. The question that I have, I think you indicated that there was a waiver for homes to be built in that area. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
What area are you referring to, John?
40B.
The 40B.
And if we're on TV, I want to make sure I got my name correct, Don Markston.
Okay.
And the waiver I was talking about was the, with the 40B comprehensive permit. So, when you bring a comprehensive permit under the state chapter 40B, it's generally because you need a waiver from one of the town zoning requirements. The waiver that was necessarily necessary here was the restriction in the highway business district. So, under the highway business district, residential is prohibited, no single-family homes. When they came in with the 40B permit, they requested a waiver of that so they could do single-family homes, and that was, that's what was granted by the zoning board, because they had to, in essence, under chapter 40B.
I guess, I find that a little bit confusing, because the homes that have been there has been stated since about 1930, all right? So, you're saying that there's a waiver for those homes, single homes to be there now?
Not the existing home. I believe the, I believe it was 10 homes were allowed under the comprehensive permit. So, 10 of the 16 homes are more recent construction allowed under the comprehensive permit.
Nine lost.
And only because of the comprehensive permit. I believe it was nine on this side, and there was actually another home on the other side of Route 28 on Algonquin, I believe. That was, that was one of the, that was where one of the affordables went, was over there.
Then the other question I have has to do with the Zanelli property with regard to the deliveries of the, and the trucks, not being able to control the equipment or the drivers that come into your community. I've been in the transportation business, should I admit this, 40 years, and one of my responsibilities was to make sure that deliveries were made in accordance to purchase orders. So, if there's no act, if you, if a driver or a company is not allowed to go up that street, you have the power in your purchase order to stipulate that so that they do not. And if they do, you have recourse by going back to your customer, your supplier, I should say, and dealing with it from that perspective to avoid things like this. So, you really do have that power to do that. So, you know, at least going forward from today on, you should be doing that, all right? So, that's all I have for the moment. I may come up with another question. That's all I have for the moment.
And I would like to make it clear to the board, we did not come here, Mr. Zanelli and me on his behalf, to argue against everything that was said by his residential neighbors to sort of fight the enforcement zoning violation claims here in front of the Board of Selectmen, because we're talking about a zoning change here. So, we've tried to focus in on that zoning change. And I'm sure Mr. Zanelli would have a lot to say about how he operates his property and what he's trying to do out there. I just didn't feel this was the venue. This was the venue to try and get to the zoning issue before, the zoning amendment issue before.
But part of what's happened here is the way that it's operating has caused heightened concern over the creeping into the neighborhood, commercial property. And then, the heightened concern is because the current owner of the business is looking to expand and is not being perceived as being very residential friendly with their neighbors. So, as a result, the encroachment is a bit heightened, and the perception is worse.
I think that's very astute, Mr. Elyer. I would, I've gotten the same perception tonight. The, what I'd say to that, though, is that's the exact reason why you shouldn't rezon. That's sort of the number one reason why you shouldn't rezon. You should, you should allow the existing zoning to operate like it's meant to, which is to allow a successful business to expand into that neighboring property, to put that expansion in front of the CPC. Let the CPC put on the conditions. Let them control the access. Let them put conditions on the access. They could condition the very truck issue we're talking about. Let them put conditions on landscaping and buffer and operating and all that sort of thing, and that's what the CPC does every day. And that's a, that's a good reason not to change the zoning. And that would give him then more, he'd give him more space. It would almost double the size of his space, so he'd have more room to maneuver trucks in and out, to impact the public way less, to screen that area from the residential neighborhood. to screen that area from the residential neighbors and from the street. And, and that's, you know, that's what the town has been trying to do, to get these properties to bring themselves up in that highway business district. And that, that's, that's what he wants to do. That's what he came to town to do, is to bring that property up. And this would allow him to do that. If you allow the zoning change, it locks in what you have right now is what you're going to have indefinitely, because the zoning change does not affect his property. One, it's not even within the zoning change. Number two, he's a pre-existing non-conforming use if it were changing his property. And so you would be stuck with what you have out there right now until someone else comes in, who would probably be a similar user, just like the user he replaced. And you're going to be stuck with what you have. That's a, if you change the zoning, like it's being requested.
There's a lot more activity now than there was previously. I mean, the Rooks were there for years and there wasn't a peep or complaint about their operation ever. And in a very short period of time, there's been a significant amount of chatter regarding the current operation. And again, I think it's something that needs to be worked out. My, my other interest, Mr. Chairman, is to find out if the planning commission is, is going to be opining on this proposal, since it does propose a zoning change. So I'd be curious and interested in knowing if the planning commission is planning on taking a position on the, on it. And again, that certainly would impact, uh, quietly.
Mrs. McKnight, do you want to?
The CPC held its public hearing on this matter on April twenty-first. And at the end of that hearing, they had not reached a consensus and they decided that they would be giving their recommendation at town meeting. Since that time, we have not held any additional meetings on the matter. A consensus has not been reached, and so at this time, we will not be offering a recommendation. The CPC's plan is still to offer their recommendation at town meeting.
Is the planning commission required to make a recommendation on a zoning change?
They are required to give an oral report at town meeting or a written report. Because twenty-one days will have elapsed between their public hearing and town meeting, they don't have to give a written report. They can give an oral report, but they're, and they, and also their recommendation can be no recommendation. So for example, if the members were split and they didn't reach a consensus, they're, they could give an oral report at town meeting and state that they did not have a recommendation.
I want to take one more question from the audience and then want to bring this to a close and give the board an opportunity to make one more final comment. And if we want to take the matter up and vote tonight, or do we want to hold off until our next meeting as well? State your name, please, and address...
Charles Carrucci, three Chester Street. I am directly across from Pluff Avenue. I've been there for fifty years. I've seen a lot of changes on twenty-eight, good and bad. My question, first of all, and I don't know if it's for the selectmen or for the planning board, Plymouth Road was rezoned from commercial to residential, I would say, maybe three or four years ago. Saint Teresa's property, which was commercial, they put it on the market. They came to the town and they had it rezoned to residential. Now, I don't know where the thought process is for that. So I'm just pointing it out as a point of information. Also, you got to look at twenty-eight. I noticed they just built the landing strip down next to Best Gas, which means there's a used car lot going in there with a trailer for an office. I don't know what we're doing on Route twenty-eight, all right? It's not helping us. And the last thing I will say, I don't want to be insulted too much by the attorney for Mr. Zanelli, but changes can be made. We're not stuck with anything. All right? Thank you.
Well, I will say this about your question regarding Route twenty-eight and what the new businesses that are moving in there. And, and I don't mean this in any disrespectful way at all, but we don't live in Russia. We can't just say what comes into these, these property owners' locations. They can bring in what they want as long as they meet the bylaw and the zoning and so forth and so on. I agree with that process. I don't necessarily like it as well. I drive down Route twenty-eight. I'm on the Economic Development Committee. This board has made it, one of our biggest priorities is economic development. And, uh, I think we, and we even took it as a goal and an object, uh, an objective of ours to do a beautification on Route twenty-eight. And to start beautification, and I, and again, no disrespect to you, Mr. Zanelli, but if I own the business across the street, it's really hard for me to consider investing in more, improving my location when I look at a temporary structure like this. And to see the way the business is operated, it would concern me, being in the butter, running my business. Why do I want to keep reinvesting if I'm going to see this type of business continue? Or at least find a way to operate it in more of a way that fits with, in the environment with the residential neighbors there. Route twenty-eight is something that has to be hit worked. And I don't think by taking away commercial property is going to be beneficial to do that. But if we're going to continue, I think what's broken here is us, the town. My opinion is that our zoning needs to probably be re-looked. And when we let a temporary structure stay up like this for that long, it's broken. And we allow materials like salt and those sands running to the aquifer and not have an ability to do something about it, we're broken. So I think there's a fault all around that's contributing to this. I don't think legally, Mr. Zanelli is doing anything wrong. I just think, what Mr. O'Leary stated was very factual. I just think you outgrew your spot and to continue to keep driving your revenue forward and meeting your bottom line or exceeding your bottom lines, you have to continue to disrupt your neighbors. I don't think there's any other way for you to be successful, other than disrupting your neighbors. Is there a happy medium here? I think there is. I hope there is. I encourage the neighbors and the owners of two ninety-nine to find a happy medium. I, I don't know if we can get to a resolution tonight. I'm not sure if my board's even prepared to make a vote tonight. I'd like to give them more opportunity to speak and, and have with all of you here. And that's what I'm going to do now. I'm going to open up to them and I'm going to, I have a couple of closing comments and then we're going to move on. Mrs. Menopelli, Mr. Yor, Mr. O'Leary, you have any more input or recommendations on how we should move forward as a board on this? Yes, Mr. Yor.
I'm not, aside from it being a petition, I'm not sure if it should ever have gotten to that point to be in front of us. It seems that there should have been some greater discussions, um, with the CPC, with the zoning board, to, to remedy this. It, it just seems, it's a petition, so we have to, we have to, um, work with that. But it ju, it just seems that there's sort of been more discussions that I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Briscoe, and I, I think there are solutions to this that haven't been, appear to haven't been addressed, okay? I wasn't involved in the discussion, so I have to say, appear to not have been addressed. Looking at the property here, both properties, they are looking to purchase the other property that would make it as long as Dunkin' Donuts is. So it would encroach the same distance as Dunkin' Donuts does. That's what I'm, what I'm seeing there. So I, I just, I'm not sure how to go forward with this, because it just seems to be so much more information that needs to be taken into consideration at this point. I, I don't really, you know, going to town meeting is a concern that I have in that it'll be a long conversation and darts will be thrown probably from both sides of the argument. And it might be a rash decision that we're making at this point, because we're reacting to a situation rather than a planned discussion about the issue. So all I know is that it is a petition that was made and it's been brought before us to see if we would either support or not support the petition. And again, for the sake of being repetitive, I don't think it should have come to this point as quickly at this time.
Anyone else on the board? Or Mr. O'Leary?
I would hope that the CPC would weigh in on this, uh, and take a position, even if it's three to two. You know, at least weigh in on where they are in relation to, to the rezoning in a highway business district. You know, is it prudent? Is it part of the master plan? Does it adversely impact it? You know, what is the, uh, the main, you know, plan and scheme that we have out there? I mean, we've had these plans for years. And what we're looking to do is, is take, well, sixteen parcels, but really it's, it's, uh, seven parcels, because nine of them you're not going to touch, because it's protected under forty B, at least for twenty-five years. You know, but you're talking about those parcels, you know, on Pluff Ave, that are already zoned, uh, highway business, you know? As Mr. Carrucci pointed out a few years back, we did entertain, um, a zoning change for another small street on the same side of Route twenty-eight and again, created a residential district. I think the arguments at the time were pretty similar. And also, uh, I think it was believed that the impact of removing it from the highway business district was not going to be significant at this point in time. You know, until you have sewerage, there's, the value of those homes, um, is going to remain about the same until the value of it increases significantly with sewerage, which makes it more commercially, uh, valuable. Similar situation here. You know, in going up and down the street there and checking it out, I mean, most of the homes up there have been improved significantly over the years from what they used to be when I grew up in town, newer homes. Uh, there, there is one parcel there with some, an excavating equipment in the back. And I don't know, are they planning on building a new home on one of those lots? I don't know who owns it. Yeah?
I mean, yesterday I...
Yeah, is that what you're looking to do? Build a new residence there?
Yeah.
Tell the old one? Looks like it. Okay. So again, and that's pretty much the last parcel on, uh, Pluff, you know, other than the Rooks, to be renovated or replaced. You know, looking at the map that's in the warrant, what you've got is this giant parcel right here, which are the fifteen of the sixteen parcels being proposed. And then one little peninsula here sticking out, which directly abuts, um, two ninety-nine Main Street. I would be willing to entertain a proposal of, again, to avoid the domino effect of taking care of everything that, that runs parallel to the Dunkin' Donuts property and, and, was it Four Pluff Ave? Four Pluff Ave and east of that is being residential. Uh, again, my concern in relation to the forty B is, is that I don't want to impact the viability of that forty B project that being counted for affordable housing and all the rest. So we'd have to do some research on that, whether we leave it in highway business and has a non-conforming use and has a comprehensive permit, you know, take that out of it if we have to. If it doesn't impact it, then go ahead and throw it in there as, uh, rezoning it to residential. Uh, it would still require a comprehensive permit because of the density. It would just be a different waiver from the zoning. So, so to me, you know, the Rooks have a, have a reasonable expectation to be able to do something with their property from which they, when they bought it many years ago. The intent of the, of the family was to conjoin the parcels and use it for commercial purposes. But I think to take that right away is something that needs to be considered. But by the same token, everyone else in the neighborhood says basically, "Leave us alone and don't, and don't impact it." So I mean, if there can be a compromise where, you know, the proposal can be amended to exclude that one, uh, one parcel, that may be a consideration. Again, we can have council look at the impact of the comprehensive permit, if there needs to be some other amendment. Then I think it's something, it's something to consider. I mean, we can, we can, uh, as someone pointed out, when Mr. Zanelli goes to do something with this additional parcel, he will have to go for site plan review. And, uh, that's when we call upon our elected officials and appointed officials to look out for the best interests of the, of the neighborhood through screening and different restrictions to be placed on the property. So I mean, if there can be a compromise reached where people would be, not everybody's a winner. You know, not everybody wins. But it certainly does protect and eliminate the so-called domino effect. But also secures and perfects the rights of the Rooks to do what they intended to do. As a matter of fact, if this had already, this parcel had already been sold and transferred, I think the point would be moot. You know, it'd already been transferred as commercial and Mr. Zanelli had already purchased it. And petition to do something else puts the wheels in motion. I think this whole thing would be moot. But that hasn't happened yet, so. I, I would encourage the parties to, to get together and see if there is a compromise. And again, if there isn't, town meeting will decide. And, and there's no doubt in my mind that town meeting would be sympathetic to the neighborhood, as well they should be. But again, should the rights of this one particular parcel owner be infringed upon to this degree? Based upon what the reasonable expectations were thirty, forty years ago when they purchased it and were operating there. So, I mean, it worked out very well for Mr. Rook, because he lived right next door to where he worked. And he was able to police it again. I'll reiterate, uh, the issues that I've heard over the last twelve months exceed whatever I have ever heard of it, which was next to nothing, uh, nothing in relation to the Rooks' operations. So there's substantially more going on at this particular parcel than there was before. But I think they need to be more sympathetic to the neighbors and if we can work something out.
Right.
If we can't, town meeting will decide. But I still think the CPC should weigh in. I would like to hear what they have to say. And I think town, county and council just needs to weigh in in relation to the comprehensive permit, regardless of what happens, because it is going forward before town meeting.
Thank you. Can you have any?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I would have the expectation that they would, you hear in these safety issues being raised, these concerns about the traffic coming in and out of there, about, um, larger vehicles and construction vehicles, you know, entering and exiting. I disagree that we can even, I disagree about the fact of, you know, allowing it to extend along the lines of Dunkin' Donuts, just by...
That's why I put this up here, uh...
Right.
I don't know if we have a better one, but you, you know.
The one in the warrant's pretty good.
Yeah, I, I just don't know if we, uh...
But even this bird's eye view...
Mr. Gilberto, if we have that up on the slide by any chance, the one that's in the warrant? If we could have it up there, it would be helpful for the conversation, but please continue.
Just, this is a residence here. This, this is a home and it's been a home. That's what we've heard. And this is rather large in terms of its footage...
Yes, it is.
On the Dunkin' Donuts side. This is rather narrow in terms of this business and the home that's right behind it, so, um, I...
But it does directly abut, uh, the, the backside, the north side of the property directly abuts the tavern. And again, runs along the same property line. So to me, it's a, it's a natural boundary as to where the highway business district should end, if we're going to cut it.
So tavern, does the tavern...
This is the tavern property right here.
Along that same back.
Okay, so again, same line right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all we're talking about is this one parcel, which is the one in question.
Sure, but it doesn't, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
And I would agree with you. We need to have more input in terms of, you know, what's the impact, just like you said, and what their thought is in terms of the planning aspect of it. But even extending that, it doesn't sound like that's going to go far enough to address the safety issue with bigger vehicles coming in and out.
I, I think what it does is it then provides the planning commission through site plan review to address a whole host of issues, as far as hours of operation, when deliveries can take place, screening, types of structures.
But isn't that only if they purchase this lot and join the two together? Other than that, no?
It's a change in use. But Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a change in use.
Central business.
Change in use, so therefore it has to go for site plan review.
Okay. I'd like to wrap this up, if I could. Like I stated earlier, I think compromise is the success for us to get through this. And I know that it's probably not the answer that residents want to hear. But I think you need to find a way, and I think what Mr. O'Leary is proposing is something that you should seriously give some consideration if you want to obtain the support of the town in, uh, at town meeting. That's the sense I'm getting. I'm just, you know, we didn't vote. But I, I do encourage the CPC to take a position on this. I, I really do. And if you could do it before town meeting, it would be helpful for all of us. I also think that we need to take a homework assignment as a town. I think we've done, you know, this structure, this development going in under forty B, we lose a lot of control. We all know that. But we got to live with it, like Seth said. Like Seth said, you know, the train left the gate on this one. It's a resident neighborhood now. We have to do the right thing with our zoning, and it sounds like our zoning is a little bit broken. We need to fix some things in there, and this is the time to do it, so they don't have to continue to have these issues, and if it's not in this neighborhood, and other issues that develop in other neighborhoods. We, I don't think there's a soul in here that won't agree that we probably have to do some work on outside on the zoning. Mr. DeCola, I don't know how you feel about that. Would you agree? I'm not saying that we're all broken, I'm just saying this is an opportunity for us to make some improvements. Mr. Pierce, please.
Mr. O'Leary's comments, I think he's pretty much right on the money. The, I think that if there was a situation where we were being asked to rezone only those residential properties that were involved back there in the forty B, and then the line, as he called it, I think you might find a consensus a lot easier for everybody to come to. And just quickly, you asked about the master plan. The master plan hoped this would all be built out, commercial, because behind those properties, there's nothing, so you could have commercial all the way back to the back of those properties, and you would not have impacted anybody. The forty B brought that residential in and created, you know, what we're looking at now. Nineteen seventy-eight, it was mentioned nineteen sixty, we did the zoning, but in nineteen seventy-eight, the town undertook for a while to do what they called uniform depth zoning in an attempt to encourage economic development on Route twenty-eight. This is one of the parcels that was, wore already that depth and left because it was perfect for commercial development to be built back there, all the way back, because there's nothing behind it, there was nobody to impact. So they figured that as this area grew, it could be developed commercially and there'd be no impacts. But now that we put residential in there, there's nothing we can do about that, so because it was a forty B, the state mandated it. But in my opinion, the, draw that line, I have no problem, I'll vote for it in a heartbeat to keep all those residential, if that's what they want, it may be a mistake on their part, but draw that line so that the people whose properties, who do not want their properties rezoned, are not held to some standard that for these other, for the people that do want theirs rezoned. Everybody should have the same right.
Just in relation to the forty B-
Sure.
To Warren's point, you know, what happened there, there was actually a proposal, Warren, correct me if I'm wrong, years ago about building some sort of warehouse structures in the back of that parcel where the forty B is, and the residents who lived there in between Route twenty-eight and got overly concerned and started to mount some opposition to it, which stopped it in its track, and led to a forty B proposal being put in there whereby they could circumvent the local zoning and get some density in there and make some money on the parcels that they owned. So, you know, yes, we were, a residential neighborhood was thrust upon the community in a highway business district, but at the time, there was just residents on that, on that road. And to Warren's point, you know, the hope was that at some point, these parcels would be able to be bought up and developed commercially, and that the value of it would be such that people would be willing to sell them, their family homesteads, in order to allow future commercial development. But the residential neighborhood is in there in relation to the forty B, which is the anchor of it all, really, as far as the number of parcels, nine parcels. And then everyone else along the way has made substantial major improvements to their homes there, actually replaced the homes, and another one's being done. But I think the rights of the other people, as Mr. Pierce pointed out, particularly the director butter to the highway business district, that's in the highway business district, those rights need to be protected, and I think the impact is minimal in relation to the whole proposal as to what's being made here, so.
But the concern I have is I keep hearing, and Mr. Pierce just said it again, if we make this proposed change, it may potentially hurt the residents, and I don't understand that.
Economically. Economically whereby, you know, sewerage comes in, the value of that property, the parcel itself, the land substantially increases, and the potential to the town as far as economic impact and development of those parcels would have far greater effect than single-family homes. Single-family homes cost us money, cost the town money.
Oh, it does, I understand.
So, I mean, if we could promote economic development through conjoining of these lots and have commercial development with sewerage, it's certainly worth a heck of a lot more to the taxpayers and not threatening with less of an impact to a neighborhood. But at this particular point in time, we're looking at generation away or better before anything of that.
No, I understand all that. I thought it was related to the comprehensive permit, that's what you were referring to. I understood-
I misunderstood that, okay.
And, and so what we, I think, need to do is, if this ends up going down with being somewhat discussed here, what can we do to protect these residents from being affected by the, some negative effects to the comprehensive permit?
Negative effect of the comprehensive permit? Whatever, whatever impact it is, is already there, and right now, it's a very nice neighborhood.
Mr. Pierce, if you wouldn't mind coming up and just, and we're going to wrap this up.
Mr. Bornstein pointed it out a little bit, that there's a question about what happens if you, the forty B was necessary because it was not zoned for housing, so the forty B came in and overrode the zoning and put the housing in. If you now zone a residential, you don't need the forty B anymore. So, does that affect our, I don't know, I know we got a letter from town council that said it might be possible if we do something like this for a commercial to get back in, because then somebody could get a variance from zoning or something. The forty B is, really rocks all the protection.
Even if we do one, even if we're dealing, we're taking out those one, I mean, taking out, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't-
Leaving one in, taking all the others out.
It doesn't matter, because once the residential is by right, question is, do we still, you know, does the forty B still hold? Do we now, since it's a by right subdivision, do we, do we get the credit for the, can we hold on to the-
You're right.
Although it's not a by right, that is not a by right subdivision. That subdivision still would have had to go through the comprehensive permitting process in order to be built as it's built, because of the density requirements.
Yeah, because they're non-conforming, right?
Well, actually, you're correct in that, because if we make this Residence A, none of these conform to Residence A, that's another question, totally. If you're going to zone this Residence A, there isn't a single parcel there that conforms to Residence A, it's not a single forty thousand square foot parcel there, so.
Why don't we do this? Let's, let's-
If it was Residence B, it might be-
I'd like to wrap this up now.
That's not true.
That's not true.
I'd like to wrap this up now, we, Mr. Gilberto, if we could get a little direction from town council on that question in regards to what effect it would have on the neighbors in regards to that comprehensive permit. And then we'd try to have some communication with both parties to try to share this.
Jim, could we just get a reaction from some of the petitioners to what we're talking about, as far as that one parcel?
Krasowski, please.
In return, supporting, concept of the petition?
So I have to, I have Michael Kay calling from One Fairway Road, North Reading. The reason we're including Four Pluff Ave is, again, there's the lack of an ingress and egress out onto Route twenty-eight, and there's a concern of the safety of the children. By expanding the business, there's going to be more trucks that are going to be traveling down that road. So I'm a little disappointed, but I understand that there's a need for more information pertaining to this particular proposal. But as we expand this area into this business, it's just going to be more traffic, and it's going to be less safe, and it's going to be less environmentally friendly to the rest of the community on Pluff Ave and Fairway Road. And as for, as for the rest of the town employees, the only permit that was discussed today was the retaining wall. When it was asked by the selectmen, were, were there any permits pulled? There was not an answer. The first thing Mr. DeCola came up and stated today was, by the way, we have one hundred ninety-three residential, commercial properties, and we've lost three in this. So is Mr. DeCola an impartial representative in this particular conversation, or is he partial to TZE? Because that was his first statement.
Well.
Secondly, the signage that was up there was not permitted.
The signage?
Yeah, there was signage there. So I have yet to see a permit produced on any of this work. So my concern is, as we allow this, say we allow this particular property, what other issues, after the large structure they're proposing to build to store huge pieces of equipment, what other issues are we going to see that the town can't enforce? We can't enforce the small piece of property there now. What are they going to do after that structure is built and all these trucks are traveling? What are they going to store? What pit are they going to create? That's the question. You're right, Mr. Prisco, this town is broken. I think you're on the right path in trying to correct some of that processes.
Well, we'll get your comments. I believe we can get your copies of the permits that you referred to, and I think you actually referred that there was more than one permit that's been pulled on this property. And we can get those for you and have them available at town hall to be picked up.
My vote for your recommendation.
Yes.
Two-thirds vote to make the change on the floor, is that what it is?
Zoning bylaw? Yes.
Two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
So the question, the folks at home-
Majority zoning is two-thirds.
It's a two-thirds vote majority to pass this article at town meeting. Okay, so we have some homework assignments to do. I'll follow back up with the town administrator tomorrow and try to get things, sort of, just to review the actions that are being taken. And Seth, we'll forward those permits on to you. I'd also encourage the residents to meet back with the owner of Two ninety-nine. Think about what was being said tonight, what's being proposed, and again, I encourage the CPC to make a position on this sooner than later, and we will not hold another meeting until town meeting on this subject. So we'll try to do some work behind the scenes through the, through the town administrator and the building code enforcement office, and we'll try to do the best we can for you. But I think you get a sense for what we're going to say at town meeting floor, where we all stand. And we, and I promise you, people listening at home, we do have some work on our zoning we have to work on, we will have to take those, we're not going to get that done by town meeting, but we're going to have to work with our zoning board of appeals and try to do an analysis of those things that are affecting us negatively and make the positive changes. Any more questions? We're good? We move on on this? Okay, we're going to go to the next warrant article, which is Article One.
Do you take, give us two minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, if we could just, the heat's killing me from this thing. This thing blows so hot.
Really?
Oh, I'm dying, you can feel it. We did have on the agenda at eight o'clock the street acceptances, so I apologize, we're thirty minutes late on that, but-
Mr. Chairman, before we go into this re-acceptance series, it brought to my attention, we didn't read the hearing notice for the warrant article review hearing, if we could read that into the record.
Didn't see one in the package. Yeah, we went through it earlier, so we just assumed we didn't have one.
Good thing the election was a couple weeks ago.
See, but we can blame this on Kate, since it's her first night.
I was going to say it wasn't-
We went through the package.
Is it in my?
Oh, we have it right here.
It's not in the packet, I apologize.
No problem.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Notice of informational hearings, the North Reading Board of Selectment does hereby notify the residents of the town of North Reading, the hearings on the following articles contained in the June first, two thousand and fifteen annual town meeting warrant will be held Monday, May eighteenth, seven P.M., Room fourteen, Town Hall.
I don't think you have to read all, every one of them, or do we, should we have to read everyone on the list?
There's a motion to waive the reading.
Yeah, move away the reading of the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you to the finance director.
Nope.
Oh, the rest, okay.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Finance director identified it, so.
Okay. Article thirty-five.
Mr. Chairman, just by way of information on Article thirty-five, this is a proposed street acceptance for the middle school, high school driveway, approximately a couple hundred feet, which runs parallel to the Gill property. For those of you who are familiar or not familiar, at the corner of the entrance to Park Street to the middle school, high school entryway, there was a need for some privately-owned land owned by the Gills, Kevin and Susan Gill. They've been kind enough and patient enough over the last couple of years to allow us to construct on their small parcel there. In return, we're going to be granting an easement, cross-easement agreement, the most cost-effective way of doing so without all the land takings and all the rest, is to have the parcel, the portion of the driveway which runs parallel to their land to be accepted as a street. And what that does is it basically indemnifies both parties, the town and them, as far as requirements in relation to liability, in relation to need for cross-easement agreements, in relation to the need for insurance coverages, and it's the most cost-effective way. And again, I appreciate the Gill's patience in dealing with us, and this finally will bring it to fruition into another town meeting vote. Again, if you recall, a couple of years ago, town meeting authorized the board of selectmen to do whatever was necessary to effectuate the land transfer. Again, this is the most cost-effective way of doing it. The other evening, the town administrator, myself, went to the planning commission whereby they unanimously voted to sign the plan and, and the street acceptance and support the article, so we're certainly grateful for their work in supporting this, grateful for the town engineer, TPW, and any of the, all the other town departments in facilitating this. So this evening, well, a couple of things. Later on, I guess we're going to be signing the plan and another agenda item, but-
Which will take place now?
Which will take place now?
Yes.
Which will take place now. So again, I would urge my fellow board members to support the article, which we've already voted to do anyway, and then agree to sign the plan. I don't see the Gills here or anybody else who may be affected, so I haven't heard any opposition, only support. The secondary school building committee has approved it and recommending it. School committee is fine with it, so everybody appears to be on board.
Mr. Yor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cross-easement, help me out here, they still own the property, is that what I'm understanding? Do we still have a cross-easement to you?
No, we're using it.
I know.
Right, no, we have no cross-easement. We have no agreement with-
We have none now, but-
And we have constructed on their land.
But, but, but this, but this, technically, they still own that part that, of the road that is-
But that will not, and once this is done, we'll be able to effectuate the land transfers. That'll come later on.
See, okay. Thank you.
All right.
Is there any public, anyone want to ask if there's any public input on the article?
Is there any public input? None seen, so we can-
Close the public hearing portion on Article thirty-five.
A second.
Then we can deliberate.
Public hearing is closed, and we do have a, a little report to the town that we'll have Mr. Minappelli read, and then we'll go into a motion.
The laying out of a townway report to the town. The Board of Selectment of North Reading, having determined and adjudged that common convenience and necessity require that a townway be laid out as and in the location here and after described, having complied with all the requirements of law relating to notice to the owners of land to be taken therefor, and of a hearing thereon, and having met at the time and place appointed for such hearing, and then and there heard all persons present who desire to be heard, we do hereby lay out a townway for the use of the town as follows. Middle High School driveway from the intersection at Park Street Station zero point zero zero to the street line at the end of the cul-de-sac, Station one plus ninety-eight point forty-three. For further identification of this description and location, references hereby made to the plans by Welch Associates Land Surveyors, Inc., dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, verified by our signatures and made a part of this report. This laying out so made by us, we hereby report to the town for acceptance in order that the same be forthwith filed in the office of the town clerk. Witness our hands and seals this eighteenth day of May, two thousand and fifteen, Board of Selectment. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Middle High School driveway as shown on a plan drawn by Welch Associates Land Surveyors, Inc., dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Minappelli, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any more discussion?
Just in relation to the article, again, it does reference authorizing the board of selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain the fee or lesser interest in the land within the said way, which would be the Gill's property, all right, and any drainage or access or other easements related to and raise an appropriate sum of a dollar to effectuate it.
I just want to thank the Gill family for all their patience and efforts in getting this pulled together. This is a major- This is a major finish for the school, to finish up that road and make sure everything's clean and neat as we go forward. So thank you to them. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, as well, for all the time and effort you put into getting this to its final stages. Okay, on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, there's a copy of an order, I think, that's coming around, and we also have a copy of a plan here that requires signature by the board members as well. We have the special marker and mylar.
No, right here.
Already signed by the CPC.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I might suggest that we take some of the other articles out of order. CPC has an interest in at least one of them, I think, and then Martin's Pond.
Let's do Martin's Pond, if that's okay with CPC members.
No, we're Mrs. Nocoe.
She stepped out.
No, we're Mrs. Nocoe.
Sorry. Sure. Danielle, if you could come to the podium, and we could start with yours, and let's see, what article's the first one?
I believe the first article would be Article number twenty-one, and I believe to start our conversation, the town planner has some good news.
Yes, thank you. So we had submitted this warrant article to do a corridor study for Route twenty-eight, including looking at, among other things, the zoning and land use along the highway business zoned corridor. Twenty-five thousand was the estimate for what it would take to get this study done. I'm very happy to report that we found out that we've received a grant from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for technical assistance in this amount, so we will not be needing to request these funds at town meeting.
Excellent. Congratulations on that, by the way. I know you put a lot of work into that grant, and I thank you for all the time and effort. That's fantastic. Twenty-five thousand dollars, right?
Yes, technical assistance, not a check, but yes.
Yeah.
Same thing. Thank you.
So are you going to be proposing to just pass over? Are we going to be...
Pass over.
I think passing over is...
Are we going to be approving it with no money, anyway?
I'm sorry.
We don't have any dollar value in the article, so we could pass it at no, it's up to the board, I assume.
Up to the planning commission, and the sponsor of the article.
I would recommend we...
I mean, I don't know if you want to tell me, they're both favorably on it anyway, and...
I would like that.
I'm sorry, what are you recommending?
That we keep the warrant article at zero funding.
Okay.
But we get town meetings approval to conduct the study, to get them on board. Gives us another opportunity to have a little more exposure and to give them a little information on this particular study. Okay?
I think that would work for the CPC.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Good.
I don't want to speak for them, I'm sorry.
But it's okay. Good exposure. Thank you. Is that the only article you had?
Well, don't feel obliged to hang around all night. Warden?
Yes.
anything. And actually, it's technical assistance, it's not, like she said, it's not a check. So we would need to fund it if we were going to hire the technical assistance, but we're going to get the technical assistance, the value in technical assistance. And since we're not really funding anything, I have no, I think the exposure is great, I think it's a great idea, and I'm wondering if the moderator will say, you're not funding anything, so what are you, what are you doing?
Okay.
Just a question.
Mrs. Elbert.
Why can't CPC or whatever, at the time that they announced it's being passed over, say what they're doing instead, and they've received this grant? That still gets them the exposure.
I don't want to speak for Mr. O'Leary, but I think he was just trying to get the motivation of the community behind these types of activities, so...
No, I mean, that's great.
Okay.
Could always appropriate a dollar.
Well, right now, we voted to recommend, and I'm sure if we want to change our vote, if somebody wants to make a motion to Mr. Gilberto, if that's the right step here?
Well, the planning commission is going to be recommending passing over at this point, so...
I would say that's the best move.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over.
Second.
At the request of the planning commission.
I got a motion by Mr. O'Leary, I got a second by Mr. Yule. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, come on up. And this is Article seventeen.
Hi, I'm Janet Napolchuk, Chair of the Martin's Pond Reclamation Study Committee. Reclamation Study Committee, after doing a hearing reports of the residents of a new infestation of invasive plant in the pond, had a survey done last year by Dr. Lyon of Merrimack College, and indeed, it is Eurasian milfoil, which is probably the number-one offender of invasive plants in Massachusetts, and even across the United States, as something that the DEP has recommended, early detection and rapid response. So we're at that rapid response stage. The article is being recommended to support five years of studying, studying the pond and the first two years of treatment, or however that, if there's... So, I guess I have to explain it. So we came up with a five-year plan, and the five-year plan is that over five years, so that we have a plan in place, we will have Dr. Lyon, who is pretty much an unbiased professor at Merrimack College, Chair of the Department of Biology, study the effects of the herbicide treatment, and then use scientific analysis to then decide when more treatment is needed, so that we are not leaving the herbicide treatment in the, up to the discretion of a contractor. And the contractor that has chosen Aquatic Control Technologies to do the application of the herbicide is well-known, probably one of two leading herbicide applicators in the state and even in the region. So the compromise was met, because funding five years of treatment, expected treatment in five years of study was about ninety-one thousand dollars. So the compromise that was met was that we wanted five years of study done, so that we knew that we were studying the pond and making sure that we were not amiss in keeping up on what this milfoil is doing. And then to fund its first two years of treatment, and then after year two, which would be October two thousand and sixteen, town meeting. If that summer's treatment, if the monitoring after that summer's treatment showed that more herbicide might be needed the next year, then we would come back at that time. But the condition of the pond and the light attenuation of the pond may be that the amount of money that's allotted for year one and year two may carry us four or five years. So in a prudent, you know, in the effort of being prudent and not going for more than we know that we actually need, this is the fifty-six thousand, two twenty-five, we'll fund that, so.
Okay. Any questions?
We've already voted to recommend, and we hope town meeting agrees with us.
This money is raised inappropriately, right? Correct?
Can I just say one more thing? Is that if anyone in the audience is watching and wants to understand how we came to this decision, it was a difficult decision to come to the decision to use herbicides in Martin's Pond. The health of the pond is really our number-one priority. On our website, martinspond.org, is the full public hearing film, the NorCame film, that everyone is, would really encourage people to watch, because we had members from DEP, Aquatic Control, John Lyon, really experts in the field there, that gave their studies and reports at that time, so.
Thank you for all your efforts and advocacy.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I'd like to go to Article twenty-five, and have the chief come up, and so we can, I think that's only one article we have with you tonight, chief? And then we'll do the DPW ones, and then we can finish up the rest.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, the sponsor for this particular article is the Board of Selectmen, it wasn't the chief's recommendation with regard to this?
I know, but we needed his support, I believe, to finish it up.
Okay.
And I believe that's the only reason he's here.
I'm here to answer questions.
That's correct, he's here to answer questions.
That's correct. So if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, answering some of our questions on the article we are sponsoring, I would appreciate it. So Article twenty-five is, we're amending the general bylaw to add a new applicant for the fingerprinting to the existing article, and the new applicant is going to be a class, for two class, class-two license holders to be fingerprint, for automobiles, to be fingerprinted. Do you want to add anything to this, chief?
The article?
Yes. Or any comments?
Well, no, I don't really have any comments. No, I'm just here to answer your questions. Essentially, the reason for the fingerprinting in general is so that we could conduct a national criminal check on those applicants, so that we present that to the board, and the board takes that into consideration when they're determining suitability of the applicant.
And to add a little bit more context, as we're going through our annual licensing process and reviewing licensing applications for new licenses, one of the items that came up during those conversations is that there, it's one thing for us to ask for a report of the police department, but what the police department is able to provide us is very limited under state and federal law. However, if we had a bylaw on the books that required that there be a background check pursuant to the existing bylaw for civil fingerprinting for class-two licenses, they would then be able to do a more extensive review and provide a report that would comply with federal and state law. So that was the rationale for proposing this modification.
Typically, when the question comes to us for a recommendation or a reference check, we don't even know who the person is, so we're very limited, other than checking our in-house record, and most likely, there is no in-house check. So this will give up the opportunity for us to just run essentially a court check through Massachusetts and also the national check through the FBI database.
I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and if you find that it's going to violate any disclosure laws or any ongoing investigations, please feel free to tell me. So we didn't just randomly select this particular license holders, right? I mean, I think we had some issues in town, and I just want the people in town to know that we just didn't randomly come to this, right? There were some issues that we've seen in the past with these types of license, not all, but some, which gives us, one of the reasons why we put this forward.
Correct. These licenses seem to change hands quite frequently. We have had an incident, not involving the most recent applicant, but an applicant where was not actually the person who we said he was. Essentially, we did file criminal charges, and the person was essentially not who we said he was. So we did find out who he was, and there were outstanding arrest warrants for him at the time, and still to this day, the case is in default. But like I said, this does not, this is not towards anybody that's applied, this is just one recent applicant who did come before the board for a license, but you did not have that information. If we did run the fingerprints, we'd be able to positively identify the person if he is in fact in the database. So I don't know whether or not the, you know, this whole scenario still would have happened if he wasn't in the database, but certainly we would have been able to positively identify who the person was.
Thank you. Any other question? Mr. Yule?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I guess I don't understand, the class-two automobile license is precisely what, and then why do we really need to have fingerprinting?
Essentially, the board, it's so that you can determine suitability on a person. You're getting the most information that you could possibly have to make that informed decision on your part. So essentially, by writing the criminal check, if the person that is applying for a license does have a criminal check, then you can take that into account when determining whether the person's suitable to be issued the license.
That part I understand.
Used car license.
For a used car license.
Correct.
So I guess, why do we need a criminal check to sell used cars? I don't understand that.
It's not, you don't need to, it's for the, you are the issuing authority on the license. So it's just so you can determine the person's suitability to hold that license.
I mean, I, okay, I do...
So I can tell you, I'm the issuing authority for ice cream truck drivers, and I have the authority to, based upon the bylaw and state law, to run a criminal check on that person to determine whether they're suitable to deliver ice cream to kids in our community.
Right, right.
It's the same thing on your end of it, it's, right now, alcohol licenses are fingerprinted on an annual basis, so you know before issuing that license whether or not the person has a criminal background, and if they do, whether that crime would affect their ability to sell alcohol in town. And it's the same way with the class-two dealers. So if you had, let's say, the person was charged with a felony tampering with a vehicle identification, there was some information that you would like to know as the board before you issue that person the license.
Okay.
So if they have a criminal record, doesn't mean that they're not able to get the license, it's clearly up to you whether you issue it.
I'm sorry.
But if, you know, if the crime that they committed is somehow tied to what they actually do for business, you may want to take that into consideration.
Okay, so if someone has a criminal record of stealing cars, okay? Being a used car dealer, you know, there's a bit of a tie in there. But if a fellow has a criminal record of a completely unrelated type of record, would we be able to use that to prevent giving him a license, even though it's a completely unrelated type of criminal activity that may have happened fifteen years ago or something like that?
It's what you perceive from whatever it is that you're reading, and whether you determine whether that person's suitable.
So it's open to our judgment, I guess, is...
Correct.
Thank you.
And why aren't we proposing class-three, which is a junk car dealer, which is, you know, pass out the vehicles?
I'm not sure, have you issued a license for class-three?
Yeah, but it's operated out of the home, they can't have anything on their property. But yes.
Well, this is our, you know, this is our warrant article.
Yeah, I know, I'm just...
That's the first, I guess I didn't realize we even had any more. I thought they were all gone.
Since I've been chief, I have not seen any requests.
Mr. Duscheck operates a wholesale, he deals in cars, parts.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't think he actually had anything on site.
No, that's the restriction on this, but it's still a class-three license. He could be operating somewhere else, obviously.
I got you.
But the license is through us. I'm just...
So if he's dealing with the wholesale end of it, he's not dealing with the public on a daily basis, which class-two will be?
I just look at the license itself, what it is, it's a junk car license, it's wholesale, but it's still dealing with pieces of vehicles as opposed to the entire vehicles.
Okay. You want to make a proposal to...
No, no, maybe that's for another day.
Yeah.
I don't think you could adjust that warrant.
No, because it's going to just warrant out of play.
It'd have to be in consideration for another meeting.
All right. Thank you, chief. Any more questions?
I have just one fast one. It's only going to apply prospectively to new applicants, but not any of your current.
When they go for renewal.
Oh, so the current ones... Oh, so the current ones will have to be fingerprinted.
And that's all based upon policy, which the board would, we could change the policy as well.
Yes, Mr. Yule.
I do have another question. Thank you. Can, can this be more specific in what the crimes could be? I, I'm, you know, I'm trying to think of an example, but supposing someone had a personal family altercation, for lack of a better description, and they committed an assault, and they're coming to get a used car license, Class II. It has nothing to do with selling cars. Can we be specific and say that it has to be auto-related for us to refuse to give somebody a license? Can that be done?
Not, not in policy. That's, that's a personal decision on your end of it when you're determining whether they're suitable. The sole reason for the, the background check is just to provide the information to you. That's all.
Once you have the information, then you can make those determinations whether you feel somebody's suitable or not to hold this license. Mr. Gilberto?
Not to prolong the conversation, and I'll look to the chief for it, to select Mr. Menopelli to correct me at any point in time, but I think that part of this is that the licensing statutes in general, which give the board authority to issue licenses, over time, I think have not necessarily caught up with extensive regulation of criminal history background checks. So you have statutes that may identify that, an investigation can be done, and information can be gathered, but it, at this point in time, state or federal law has stated that we, we're restricted about what we can and can't provide and how the decisions are made. So this was intended to try to ensure that we had a legal vehicle to give the most accurate information to the Board of Selectmen. I think with regard to what's done with that information, could be a matter of policy that the board could determine at some point whether any, you know, what particular issues in somebody's background may or may not fit in. I think that would be a matter of policy for the board to decide, and I would recommend and consider that way. But without this, we really don't have a legal mechanism to get the information in front of the board to consider.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Chief, how was that? Was that?
I think you would want to keep it on a case-by-case basis, because you could have a domestic abuse situation over a sale of a car. It, it could be that situation that you might say this is an unfit candidate for, for this type of license. I would keep it case-by-case and be subject to the board's discretion, like the statute is.
You're also looking at, somebody may have an extensive criminal history, may be many different crimes. So it comes down to character and, you know, whether or not you would like to see that person deal with the public on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Okay. We have not made a recommendation on this one? Do we want to make a recommendation at this time? Is we want more time?
Just to record to show that I will be abstaining on the recommendation, because I have a family member that actually holds a Class II license. Not that I propose it, fingerprint it. It's probably a good idea, by the way. But anyway, I will not be, I will be abstaining on the recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, can I, let me make a recommendation? I recommend that we.
Make a motion?
I make a motion that we, to recommend Article 25.
My second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yule, second by Mrs. Menopelli. Any further discussion? Now that we have all five board members here, will be no more absences? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Nope.
Yeah, also, I'm sorry, anyone? So four, zero, one. Okay. Mr. Calavale's been patient. If we could go to Articles nine, 11, and 23 for him. And nine is? We already did. Yeah, okay. I was not even going to follow up with you. I already have all yours.
We'll give you the bad news as to what you get stuck with.
Wear your comfortable shoes, that's all.
No problem.
Okay. Article nine, the authorized director of Public Works to accept easements. Mr. Gilberto, did you want to?
So this is a routine article that allows a Department of Public Works Director to accept easements for the construction of public waste. I'm not aware that this is utilized for acceptance of area that would not be a public way.
It's more for utility easements.
It's a routine article appears on an annual basis to authorize the action.
Who's to recommend?
We already did.
We already did that.
We did. I just, you know, make sure there's no other.
Take it back.
Okay. Any questions on, so, Mrs. Menopelli? Number, I'm sorry, Article nine.
Oh, nice.
No, my apologies. I may have said five. If I did, I apologize. Okay. We're going to move, next one to 11, I believe, is, next one from Mr. Calavale.
Mr. Chairman, this is the authorization of Chapter 90 Construction. Again, we anticipate receiving $509,257 from the state in fiscal year 2016. You'll see, you'll see that the, that the language will differ in this June town meeting from the language that's been in, in the past. And the reason is because we've seen now that the state has a habit of releasing money after the start of the fiscal year. This, this generic, this more generic language that we'll have will authorize that funding to be expended as well. It was a challenge that we ran into for this particular fiscal year with the additional funds released in January by Governor Baker. We didn't have the authority to spend that funding at, as of January 1st or January 5th, whenever it was released. But this language will cure that issue should additional funding be released in the future.
Okay. Mr. Maseri, you have a question?
No, 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 I think it's.
Mr. Yule?
Crazy question, I'm sure, but is it conceivable that we won't get 509,257?
We have a letter signed by the governor indicating the amount we'll receive. I think anything could happen, but I think it's a fairly sure.
So, so then, does that impact anything as maybe it should say up to 500? Does that make sense?
Oh, when the, to the finance director.
You will not be voting a dollar amount.
Okay. So we're just accepting?
The motion will not state a dollar amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions on this? We'll move on to, I think, the last one you have is 23, unless I missed one. A whole bunch of capital. Oh, yeah. That's right, the capital. Why don't we do that one? Sorry. Capital was?
Article 16.
16. Let's go to 16.
The board has taken action to recommend this article. Again, the report reflects the work of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. You'll see the notations down the bottom of the slide where we're using prior appropriations applied towards the projects in the list above. And this fits within the capital schedule, identified for capital planning purposes by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
And when we had the capital hearing, I did ask if I could get just an update on what we approved prior year and get an update on where we are with the spending and what we've purchased and how much we've spent. I could still get that. It doesn't have to be, but I'd like to try to get it before town meeting, if that's possible.
Sure.
And it's actually captured wonderfully in the minutes exactly what was being requested.
So, so as a, as a member of the Capital Planning Committee, along with Don, we went through the entire process, collected all of the input. We visited, looked at equipment, we visited sites, and then we ranked items from one to five, which resulted in a rank list. And then we looked at the dollar items, the amount of funding available, both from bonding and free cash, and established this list. There was one change that took place, I think, after we made our final decisions, and that was related to the issue of not bonding the.
Storm wash.
Right.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Yule?
On, just quickly, on the meter replacements.
Jim, can you speak up?
Can you speak up?
I'm sorry. Did, on the meter replacement?
Yes.
Did we have a return on investment on that?
That was presented.
Seven point nine years, I believe.
Is that what it was?
I think so. Seven or eight years.
Okay.
Further, the, the savings that we will achieve in capturing more of the revenue from water will actually be more than the debt service.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the capital? And we already recommended the article. Okay. Article 23 would be the next one?
And again, Mr. Chairman, this was an article with regard to sidewalk snow removal, as I indicated at the previous meeting. I think there's an additional dialogue with the community that needs to take place before we put in writing a recommended change to the bylaw. I can tell you that I think the spirit and the intention of the conversations that have taken place between the Public Works Director and the police chief and myself are to identify what our needs are for pedestrian access, where the priority areas are, and then to try to get the bylaw to better mirror that. And I expect that we'll have a recommendation to be vetted with the board publicly in the fall, prior to the October town meeting, that there would be an opportunity for input from the community at that time as well. And again, the board's intention, I believe, was to pass over this article.
Any questions from the board members? We have not made a recommendation yet on this, so.
Yeah, pass over.
Yeah. Well, and here it's listed that we voted town meeting, so I reckon.
We did vote, okay.
I thought we did, but.
We've got to put it off until October.
Right.
Okay, the book didn't represent that, so.
Right.
Okay.
Should we do it again, just in case?
Nope.
No, I believe it's on the record. I thought it was reflected that way.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Edgar.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. All right. So it brings us back to Article one.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'll go through these and certainly speak up. I don't know if we have, want to call Mr. Jones, if he has anything particular he's here to.
I will. Mr. Jones, if you wouldn't mind, if we go through these, if you have a question on any of the particular articles. Okay.
Yeah, don't be shy, Brad.
So Article one, fiscal year 2015 budget amendment. The review of fiscal year 2015 budget continues, and any potential modifications that may need to take place within that particular fiscal year would be addressed at that point in time. Again, obviously, we'll bring those, we'll bring that information to the Finance Committee and the Selectmen to the meetings immediately prior to the town meeting itself on June 1st. Article two, again, the resolve of fiscal year 2015 snow and ice deficit. I know that the numbers that, that's on there is not the correct number. I'm sure the finance director is cringing that I've put the wrong number up there. Is there an update to that figure at this point that you want to offer?
There is, but it is ever-changing. You know, mailbox reimbursements are still coming in, mail tickets are still coming in. So as of today, it's approximately 817,000. There were quite a few purchase orders that were closed, which brought the balance down. So I would wait to give you a figure at town meeting.
So just so I understand, the 870 then represented a completely balanced budget? So if it ends up being less than that? This is coming out of free cash, a good piece of that, right? So, uh, we, do we still maintain a balanced budget with the changing numbers?
Yes.
Or do we have an issue?
No, we have a balanced budget.
It's shrinking.
Right.
From 870 to 817, we're in better shape.
Well, that's what I thought, I just.
Yes, we're in better shape.
Free cash is not impacting the operating budget.
No, I think you're alluding to the potentially increase over 870, Bob? Is that what your concern is? I don't believe.
We went through, a certain amount of free cash is funding the deficit. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't anticipating a number. So my question was, that 870 number represented a balanced budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So anything less than that is a balanced budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
And how much overlay surplus are we, is available?
250,000.
It's being used.
Were there any questions, Steve?
How much overlay surplus? How much overlay was being used?
Used, yeah.
It was an overlay.
Overlay surplus money.
Oh, okay. Right, because we made the, it was one.
250.
So if we wanted to go over the funding sources of how snow and ice will be covered, one, we always reserve $250,000 on our revenue plan, which basically is how it's raised on the tax recap. Then we went through all old years of overlay provision for abatements and exemptions. We found that there was, you know, funds that could be released, and the Board of Assessors released those funds. So they released 250,000 of overlay surplus. And then the remaining balance would be paid out of free cash.
And you did, and the 175 that's in the budget?
This is after the 175.
This is after the 175.
Yes. So if we go with today's, you know, approximate figure, it would be 316,000 or so that would be used from free cash. You know, like I said, it is going up and down, so, you know, you could count on maybe 320 of free cash being used to offset the deficit.
Any additional questions? Okay. Next.
Article three is a transfer of funds into the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. I think we've reviewed this one in previous meetings. If there's no questions, I'll continue. Article four, transfer of funds to the town's Water Stabilization Fund. It's basically the town's rainy day fund for water purposes. Fund balance today is 715,225. Proposal would be to transfer in 108,547 from Water Department retained earnings.
Just a comment, so the board has informed, Michael and I, Michael Liberto and I have been talking about getting all of the numbers together associated with MWRA, the cost, what bonding we will do, and create a model, and begin to take a serious look at our water rate going forward. So that rather than have some giant step function two years out, that we start to consider what we're going to have to do to adjust our water as we move ahead with MWRA water.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay. Article five?
Article five, the transfer of funds to the town's stabilization fund. Balance today is just over $2 million. Again, recommendation was to pass over due to challenging budget year and the desire to fund OPEB, which is identified in Article 20. The board and the Finance Committee elected to make recommendations at the town meeting. Article six, appropriate funds for overlay deficit. I'll look to the finance director to confirm, but again, I don't believe we have any known deficit at this particular point in time. Article seven, the selection of town officers. It's a routine action to authorize the board to choose town officers. Article eight, to hear an active report. It's a routine article. Article nine, we reviewed. Article 10, authorizes the treasurer to enter into compensating balance, balance agreements. Again, this is a routine article. If the board requires further explanation, I'm sure the finance director can provide that explanation. Did Article 11. Article 12, prior year bills. Again, the last total was 1,455.58. I looked to the finance director, I don't know if there's been any change at this point. Again, a recommendation was to be made at town meeting. We'll bring a final number into, into the town meeting, to the meeting for the Finance Committee and Selectmen prior to town meeting that night on June 1st. Article 13 was the operating budget. We went through a separate presentation at the hearing a couple of weeks ago. That'll be available at the town meeting on June 1st and be reviewed briefly for the town meeting attendees. Article, I, I do think that there's a couple of moving parts that might, may require modification to the board's actions with regard to the budget. We have a financial planning team meeting this coming Friday morning, where I think any remaining matters will be addressed. And any, any action, if any, needed by the board will be brought to the June 1st meeting, but not foreseeing anything substantial at this point in time. Article 14 was the reappropriation of borrowing proceeds from a DPW truck. Again, it was put into the fiscal year 2016 capital plan to reduce debt. Same was the case for Martin's Pond flood mitigation. Article six. Article Sixteen, we reviewed already.
Yeah.
If I'm going too fast, please tell me. Article Seventeen, we reviewed already. Article Eighteen, the funding of retirement obligations, eighty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars from raising appropriate. Again, that was recommended by the Board and by the Finance Committee, and I believe all of those expenditures are for school or department employees. Article Nineteen, the transfer of funds to Solid Waste Stabilization Fund. Any funds projected to remain in the 2015 solid waste budget would be transferred in. We will identify a projected amount at the June first meeting prior to town meeting.
Mr. Yul.
Yes. Here we have current balance of ninety-three oh thirty-seven. I have that in.
Yes, that's correct.
It's here, I don't see it on there.
I apologize, I'll add it to the presentation for the town meeting.
Okay.
The warrant is correct, as provided by the Finance Director. Article Twenty, to fund other post-employment benefits, proposing a transfer in of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. The fund balance today is one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. This amount represents fifty percent of the required deposits for new hire employees. Our plan is to phase into one-hundred percent for new hire employees. Again, this was based on the Board's strategic discussion last fall, which was intended to essentially try to begin setting aside the appropriate funds for new hire employees as soon as possible.
What was the percentage?
Fifty.
Fifty?
We put in fifty out of, yeah, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand out of a recommended number of two-hundred-and-fifty.
Now, if we have any more additional savings in health insurance, could they go here?
That's one possibility, yes.
Those items, we will make those final decisions on, at our June meeting. Before town meeting.
Article Twenty-one, we reviewed. Article Twenty-two, to amend the code relative to junk bylaws. Again, as I said in the previous meeting, this amendment to the general bylaw was a result of a concern about the enforcement of Chapter 152 in the fall of 2014. This concern arose due to a complaint about a property in which I have no financial interest and which does not impact my property. Despite these facts, the complaint could be filed against a property owner whose property impacts my property. If that were to be the case, and if the matter were to require the involvement of the town administrator, I would recuse myself from any involvement in the matter.
That being said?
That being said. Article Twenty-two relates to modifications of the junk bylaw. As I stated, we identified, based on a complaint we received in the fall, that there was a need to make amendments to the bylaw for effectiveness of enforcement. The most significant changes I'll identify is the identification of the Board of Health as the enforcement agent for matters that are related to property. Matters on private property related to vehicles would be enforced by the Police Chief as the enforcing agent, and the strength, the fine schedule has been proposed to be strengthened to be a per-day fine basis. I attended the meeting of the Board of Health last week. The Board of Health reviewed the article and was comfortable with the article going forward as was written to the town meeting, and believed that they would be an effective tool for them to enforce. Again, I expect that they would elect to enforce by having the health agent do the inspection, and if there was an appeal of a decision of the health agent, that it would go to the Board of Health to be evaluated, as would any other health appeal matter.
And the warrant article does say the chief or his designee.
So, there was one section that, where it stated, or his designee, but there's a previous section where it currently reads to be the chief himself without a notation of the designee. We'll be talking with the town clerk to see whether that's a modification we want to recommend be made now on the floor of town meeting, or perhaps at a later voting time.
We don't have a recommendation yet on this as a Board?
That's correct, we do not.
Any questions from the Board? Do we need more time to think this over, or are we ready to make a decision tonight?
I'm not, I, again, I'm not as familiar with it as I should be, but I'm just concerned about fairness and treatment of people, you know? And, you know, how far-reaching is this going to be, you know, for the town government? And, you know, one person's junk is another's treasure, you know, as they say. I mean, we have to be very careful as far as, as we're expanding this, I think we have to be very careful as far as the enforcement of it too. We just have to see how it plays out, but I'm, I don't know how, how short we are as far as being able to enforce things already, you know, other than it's been a hot potato, who's responsible for what? But, with enforcement of things, I think we still have pretty good bylaws in place, but.
Have we had an incident where current bylaws were, wouldn't allow us to do something that we wanted to do?
I don't think that it's a matter of whether the bylaw would allow it or not. I think that the challenge is that right now, as written, the junk bylaw can be enforced only by the Board of Selectmen. It doesn't have a vehicle in it for enforcement occurring any other way, including even for a violation to be issued that would need to be done by the Board itself. And when I consulted with Town Council, looking at this, it was, I think it was fair to say he felt that it was unique, that it was written in that way. And then, when I consulted with Council later on, as we were preparing for the town meeting, he identified a series of recommendations, he thought, that might make this more consistent with other property use bylaws or related enforcement, which again, would put the authority in the Board of Health. You know, there is a bylaw on the books. It is enforceable by the Board of Selectmen, but it's enforceable by the Board of Selectmen only.
Okay. But we're also expanding definitions.
We are. There are expansions that are being made, there's no doubt about that. Again, that was based on the recommendation of, of Town Council in terms of how it could be, how it could strengthen enforcement. I mean, options that the Board could consider if it was, wanted is simply leave the existing bylaw and not make those changes, and instead have the Board of Health enforce what's on the books now. That's an option.
Mr. Chad?
Yes, Mr. Steve.
Yes, was the, thank you, was the impetus for this change to move it away from the Board of Selectmen and into the Board of Health, was that the impetus for this?
I would say that, I think that the impetus was to move it to a place where the technical expertise with regard to enforcement of property violations occurs on a more regular basis.
And that would be the Board of Health's concern.
That's correct, yes.
So, other than that.
And the chief of police.
And the chief of police, right.
Violation.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm not finished.
Mr. O'Leary, you're concerned the expansion of.
Of the definitions.
Of the definitions.
Yeah, I'm like.
Not necessarily the change of.
No, I think the change of responsibility for enforcement is appropriate. It's, in order to facilitate it and get responses and, and action, I think that's appropriate. I'm not, and again, partially my own fault here, as far as the expansion of the definitions, how necessary, other than it's in the advice of Council, and of course, they represent numerous communities as to what works and what doesn't work. I never felt as though our bylaws were weak in relation to identifying and doing something about, but it was probably weak in relation to our ability to respond on a timely basis inappropriately, and I think it's more appropriate for our administration to do it through Board of Health and Police Department.
Sorry, Mr. Yul, cut you off, I apologize.
No, you did not, thank you. Yeah, the reason why I asked the two questions that I did is that, and I'm basically just following Steve's lead, if the impetus was basically to, to put the responsibility on the Board of Health and the police, and the bylaw, the additions are from Council, I would seem to think that it's sufficient to go with the change as far as the, the chief and the Board of Health are concerned. I don't know, was there any discussion with both of the, both of those department heads with regard to these, these amendments to the bylaw?
I certainly don't want to speak for them. The feedback that I got was that the Health Director was comfortable with the amendments. The Board of Health, at their meeting last week, was in support of the amendments, and the Police Chief was in support of the amendment with the notation that there was a second area where he thought it should say as designee, or his designee to enforce.
Right, right, right. Okay, so, so they were part of the solution creating this, that that's what I went to identify.
I was present with the town administrator at the Board of Health meeting and concurred. They looked at it, had Martin look at it, see if it was something feasible and something they were willing to take under their jurisdiction, and they were fine with it.
I have no problem with the, with the words being recommended, the change. I'm not uncomfortable about it at all. I would be in favor of the side. Any other feedback, Mr. Steve?
I'm in support of it. I think there's a, there's been enough incidences where people have gone, at least in the opinion, a little too far with collecting junk, and it's not like we don't have means of picking up trash and things like that. And then, you know, there have been some vehicle issues where they've been collecting on property in the woods or whatever. I don't stay on top of it.
But junk vehicles are covered, other than, other than the current definitions and bylaws. So, we've expanded the definitions outside of the junk vehicles.
Right.
It's the other waste materials.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just expanding, they're adding it in different sections that it doesn't exist in subsections today.
I think it's maybe clarification, but it's, I think the current bylaw covers those garbage, junk and rubbish, but they're not clearly defined, I think. I don't know, I just, looking for a more measured approach where as far as jurisdiction and enforcement, go ahead, pass it off appropriately where it should be, and then, you know, as situations present themselves. And again, there hasn't been an awful lot of, I don't recall much of anything other coming to the Board specifically, inquiries, but nothing that we've been forced to address publicly for years, ever.
No, I haven't heard.
So, I think, I think what we have can work, and I think what's being proposed as far as transferring responsibility would work better and be more timely for people who have issues, and.
So, do you have objections with both of number three and four and five?
I could, but I don't, you know, and again, my fault for not being as familiar as I should be with it, other than I don't know, I haven't seen a reason for the expansion of definitions based on a track record, based upon requests of this Board to adjudicate situations, or, just hasn't happened.
Would it be easier to have a more detailed list of the changes?
I assume it's just add this, add this, you know?
The warrant article's pretty good, I mean, if you read through it, you know, he just kind of summarized it here, but I think it's worded pretty clearly in the warrant article. Why don't we do this, why don't we hold off for our decision until the night of town meeting, we can make the recommendation or not? I mean, I'm ready to vote now, but I don't want to force anybody to be forced into a vote, no vote, or an abstention, because you haven't had enough opportunity.
No, no, I've had opportunity, I just haven't spent my time wisely, I guess. I just don't, I haven't seen a substantiated need for expansion of definitions, but I do see the need to transfer responsibility. And I, I just get concerned as you start specifying things, how things get interpreted.
I will say, when you read fifteen, one-fifty-two point two, it, the way it's written, at least the way I understand it, there is no wiggle room for interpretation.
They're revised.
They're revised, yeah.
If you look at, one-fifty-two dash one definitions, which is, which is new, you know, junk shall mean any tangible items such as furniture, appliance, bicycles, motor vehicles, or smaller property not having a useful purpose to the owner or abandoned by the owner and not included in the definition of garbage or rubbish, which is something Useful purpose to the owner, I mean, I may not need it today, but I want it for tomorrow, I want it for later.
Did you say one-fifty-two point one?
Yeah.
Yep. Those are new definitions.
Yep.
Those are new definitions.
Yep. I don't, well, I don't think they're new. I think they already exist, I think he just made a modification to it, right?
No, it looks like, it looks like there weren't any definitions in the current one, and they're trying to flush that out in the proposed one.
Oh, I think the current one had definitions, they just weren't in this section.
No, there was storage of unregistered vehicles.
I mean, it's pretty clear here, added definitions for garbage, junk and rubbish for this section only. Added garbage and rubbish to the list of restrictions on storage, subsection one-fifty-two two, and added the Board of Health as an enforcing board. So, it's just those two.
And I believe the existing article already had.
It's in here, it's, I think.
I believe there's a.
It's not defined.
Yeah, there's a reference to the terms, or many of the terms.
Right.
Section one-fifty-two dash four, subsection A. However, I don't think that there was a particular definition in cases or words.
Agreed, agreed, but it was referenced in the old one.
It was, yes.
Yeah.
So, you brought them in together, is that what you're saying?
Just saying, the old one.
Council before we go, I'm sorry.
No, no, you go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, Council, again, looked at it, was aware of the circumstances with regard to the proposal to make modifications, determined that it would be best to rewrite the article with having section one be the definitions of the terms that would appear throughout the article.
Got you, okay. So, we structured it, that's all.
Right, yes. But, but it did provide additional context with regard to some of the terms that originally were in section one-fifty-two dash four.
So, your issue is with the expansion. One means garbage, another means compost.
And, you know, I, I think, you know, what we had previously allows for investigation, discussion, you know, so this could be a little more, well, it's a little more specific rather than, and more restrictive. I just, it ends up looking for more trouble than we need, and historically have had.
You want more specific than what's in the, being proposed?
No, I like broad.
Yeah.
I like latitude, I like people being able to work things out, and I like to avoid litigation. Sorry, Catherine.
So, you could tell these weren't defined by a lawyer, because lawyers like this, this definition.
Box it in.
Yes.
Box it in, package it up.
Right.
Okay.
I've found over the years, wiggle room is better, but, that's just me. So, again, I like the idea, I like the idea of transferring the responsibility, I'm not necessarily embracing the clarification through definition that's being proposed.
I would suggest, we want to, we'll do, first find out where the Board is on it, not set out a vote, but just to, to get some sense of whether they're in support of it or not, and if not, then, see if Mr. O'Leary or someone can come back with some modification that we could quickly, that would fit within the four corners of the article.
I think replacing the Board of Selectmen with the chief police fits in, add the chief police enforcement.
I understood that.
All that fits in.
Right. So, we'll move on with this one way or another.
So, Mr. Yul.
Yeah, I'm not going to try to speak for you, because you're much more eloquent, but I, I think what he's saying is the, it's enough to just simply have the transfer of authority over to the Police Chief and the, and the Board of Health, and leave it at that at this point, is that what I?
Sure.
Okay.
And you're in agreement with that.
And, and I'm. You know, and, and I'm, I don't want to make that decision right now. I would rather make that decision, I don't know, next week. I'd be more, I'd be more than glad to do it then.
Mr. Menopelli, how do you feel?
If you think about...
Mr. Menopelli.
I'd be, I would be in favor of recommending it, to be honest with you, because I, I understand the point, but I, I think it's, it's enough, there's enough broad ability there to do it still, considering case by case.
Ms. Siri, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say what I think is important. Our next meeting is the night of town meeting.
Right.
So, we have to give the town administrators some direction associated with whether we're going to go with this or what an alternate motion might be.
It appears that the consensus was three were okay with what it is, so three was okay with what it is, with what's being, with what's being proposed.
How do you feel about it?
I'm in favor of what's here.
I'm in favor of it, but Mr. Yul requested another stay.
Well, if you're going, no, if you're going to do that, you know, I, I, I would, I would not support it right now, and if the three of you vote that way, then so be it.
So, just hold off the recommendation until town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move the recommend article. I've forgotten the number already.
Twenty-two, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
The second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siri, second by Mr. Menopelli. Any additional discussion?
Sure, I would suggest that, give myself and Mr. Yul the opportunity to rethink our position so that maybe you make a recommendation at town meeting, but that's up to you.
I would be...
I would draw my motion if that's your request.
You would draw your second?
Yes.
We'll bring a recommendation to town meeting.
Although, so a motion by Mr. O'Leary to recommend at town meeting, and second by Mrs. Menopelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, moving right along.
I believe we took up article number 23.
Yeah.
Article 24 relates to changes in the bylaws for youth services to remove specific references to ERISA and strengthens the language for out street to multiple departments. Also changes the term co-chair to read vice chair. Board has already taken action to recommend. Clarifies appointment terms as well.
Yep.
Article 25, we've taken up. Article 26, articles 26 through thirty...
Five, thirty-five.
Thirty, thirty-four.
Revolving funds, thirty-five.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four revolving funds. They're printed in the warrant, and descriptions that are on the PowerPoint slides are also in the warrant. I can review them if the board would like, but I think that they're self-explanatory and they're unknown new revolving accounts to my knowledge.
So, Mr. Gilberto, in the past, we have had one article, we've had it written up both ways.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure how, Ms. Siri, we've got approval to wrap them all up on one article.
Yeah.
We'll prepare motions.
I would make one motion listing...
We have to get the town moderator's approval, I believe, right, and the clerk, which we've done in the past.
Okay.
All right. Yep, and we've already recommended all those. So, that leaves us with, and we already did thirty-five, and that's it. Mr. Siri, just quickly, article thirty-six, we had quite a lengthy discussion on that one while you were here.
The time here is perfect. I gather that.
I'm not sure we're prepared to make a recommendation unless the board feels otherwise. I think... No, I, I think some of us were looking for the planning commission to make a recommendation on it. We had the inspector here to report what his observations have been in relation to the property itself, and then some of us suggested that maybe the residents look at a compromise proposal whereby allowing the one small direct parcel adjacent to it to be excluded from the, the citizen's partition.
Well, having missed, you know, the whole thing, I guess, the one concern that I had in, in terms of making changes to, to the zoning potentially could lead to a loss of we are, we're just, you know. It's not snob zoning, but, you know, it's, we're making a change because we're not reviewing the entire district, we're just making that one change.
Well, historically, we did it before Plymouth, Plymouth Road, a few years back. We actually took some of the parcels out of highway business and put them in the residential. The other issue that needs to be resolved in some of our minds is the effect on the 40B project, which is there, Fairway Ave, and if you have, who's at Fairway Ave? That was a comprehensive permit, 40B. Comprehensive permit overrode the highway business district, and now that would be making it somewhat of a conforming use as a residential district, which it wasn't before. What would the impact of that be? So, we've asked the administration to go to town council and get a little more clarification than we have already. It would still, I believe, still would have required a comprehensive permit to have it put in, but it just would have been overruled.
Which parcel was the one that you said?
If you look, if you look at the, you have that little picture?
Yeah.
Okay, just that little peninsula.
Map 12, parcel 127.
Yeah, 12127.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the one that's in question that's under PNS by the owner of 299 Main Street. So, they're looking to purchase that property and expand their business onto that lot.
So, we sent both parties off. Hopefully, they can discuss that proposal and get some feedback, probably get back in touch.
I don't know how compromising anybody's going to be.
I don't know either. I hope they do. But I, and I made, mentioned this during the hearing, that if you go and you listen to some of the zoning issues, we've probably, probably time for us to update some of the zoning, so some of these things won't happen. But that's probably, you know, that's a different time to do it, but we, I don't want to lose sight of that action. I don't know how we even do that. I'm not sure if that's done here, through the town administrator.
Generally, it's done through the planning commission.
Planning commission, yes.
And the planning commission has not taken a position, they were deadlocked or unable to reach a consensus at their April 21st hearing.
And the board hasn't taken a vote on it either at this point?
No.
We had a discussion, we hinted towards a recommended potential solution, we sent them back off, and we ended it, hoping to hear from some feedback. Mr. Gilberto, if you could just follow up with Mr. DeColer on those, that question regarding the permits. I, I want to make sure we get those, copies of those permits to the residents, because clearly they had a different view.
Yeah, that was interesting.
Well, I mean, the premise that Jim said they had were a couple of signed permits and the retaining law. I think that's all I heard. So, were there permits issued? Yes. Were they directly related to the equipment that he has there and wasn't necessary for to do that?
Yeah.
I think we were told no.
He said that they can do it. I, I don't believe him. I don't believe, the equipment that I saw on that picture is small equipment.
And there's some storage of materials there too, Bob, in this temporary quantum hut of sand, mulch, salt.
Yeah, right.
Things of that nature. Jim said those types of huts are considered temporary structures, don't require permits, expected to be there six months to a year maximum, but, and where he is using the material for his own purposes is a little different. He is selling some of it, but he's also utilizing it himself.
And the issue came up about the environmental impact because there's a drain in near the location of the storage, so is the salt and sands all getting down into the aquifer? You know, is there anything in our zoning that stops that? And I think that's kind of a gray area that needs to be looked at.
It seems to me stormwater has some control over that.
Well, we have to address all that. Okay, I think that's it. Close the hearing? Okay. Does, we have to make a motion to close the hearing, or?
We have to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siri, second by Mr. Yul. Any more discussion? I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter, it's okay, I'm in favor of it.
Good. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. It brings us now to old and new business, since we already did the town administration report.
You missed it.
Since you were last one in, we'll give you the first one, the opportunity to old and new business.
Be easy, my head is. Just a reminder that the, I wonder how many of the board members are going to make the Memorial Day ceremony?
Do we, do we meet downtown at 10 o'clock? I can't remember the time.
Few minutes before 10.
Yeah.
I'm not sure yet. My son's graduation weekend up there, there's all sorts of festivities through, but I will let you know for sure.
I'll be back for it. I'm going to be away, but I'm not, travel back for it. I just needed to know what time to head back to you.
I think then I'll be there.
We march.
Put on your walking shoes.
What?
Can I get back to you on that?
Put on your walking shoes.
You may have Little League and all sorts of stuff going.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything else at this point. We have, we're meeting with Reading.
Wednesday.
On the water Wednesday morning, begin the dialogue and communication. Have we, we have not received a proposal from the town of Andover.
Well, we're probably going to get one. It just won't be the one that you brought back to us.
It'll be something totally different again, right? I don't know. Anyway, so we haven't received anything. Any word, though?
The town, the town manager had told me on Friday that we could expect to receive something today.
Okay. So, just let me know when we get it.
I will.
One thing that we need, we had two boards, two members of the board of selectmen meeting with Andover. No, there was just the chair. No, there was two of us, right?
Yeah.
So, Mr. O'Leary? Your hand up for that?
Sorry, what, what was it?
This is to meet with Andover. And I will, we won't do the liaison assignments at the next meeting, we won't have time. But the current liaisons are in Dropbox.
Okay.
And I think Karen Marlin also, there's another folder that you might think is, it's the second one down, which she's done, is she's taken and listed all the members of each of the various town committees. So, you might find that useful.
It's very useful.
I thank her for doing that. That's all I have.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Yul?
Yes. First of all, I attended the Battle of the Bands the other night, and I can still hear you people. I just wanted to let you know, because it was at the Moose, and there's a little room there, and the music was loud, and it just pounds all over the place. But Amy Luckowitz did a super job. The bands, they, they put out their best, shows you, even had a band from, I don't know if it's Newburyport or not, but it's from way up there. So, they, they had, it was a good show, and the kids loved it. They all, you know, like groupies they got around. So, Amy did a super job there with these services. Also, I went to the middle school play that was directed by Joanna Kircham. She's a special ed teacher at the middle school. They did Law and Order. It was a pun program. It was kind of punny, if I may say. And the little kids, they did a good job, and they're going to be going to high school and getting into acting then, and that's a good progress for them. I also want to thank the DBW director, Dick Carnaval, for his central street sidewalk hearing there. He did a really super job, and I think a lot of people left that meeting feeling a little bit more positive about the potential of getting a sidewalk in there. Maybe not as timely as they would have liked, that they would like, but it was a very positive meeting. So, I, I think he did a really good job. And I want to welcome Catherine Menopelli. Welcome. We're going to have a variety of views here, and I think that you're going to be definitely a plus for us, so thank you.
Thanks for your patience, too.
You have no idea. You're going to need more patience than us. Dealing with us, you're going to need more patience than we need with you.
That's it, thank you.
Steve?
Mr. O'Leary?
Just as an FYI, request for proposals for Hillview, they'll do next Friday, so we'll see what that brings. The first round didn't bring off a lot, so we'll try the second round here.
How many people picked up?
I'm not sure how many actually picked up the proposals.
Yeah, I'll try to find out tomorrow, the board members know.
Not as many as we'd like.
Yeah, of course.
Of course. But they do it next Friday, so we'll, we'll see what that batch brings. The only other thing, again, is this is our first public meeting, televised meeting since the election, and again, I want to, again, welcome Catherine and look forward to serving with you. I want to thank the general public for, for those who participated, the 6.23 percent or whatever it was.
Is that high?
Yeah, that participated in the support that was afforded me. I hope to not disappoint. I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve and I look forward to serving with the members for the next three years. On that, thank you.
We did, just so the board members know, we did go over to the high school last week and looked at the configuration for town meeting, because I don't think any of us want to get back in that orchestra pit for town meeting. So, we tried to look at other ways to set us up, and we're going to try to get us all onto the stage. And I think we've come up with some creative ideas on how to do that. We're going to be heading over, I think it's maybe the day of town meeting in the morning, I think it's at 8:30 time, we're all going to meet over there somewhere around that, and help Barbara Staught set up in the final configuration. But I just want to let everyone know that we don't want to be back down, that nobody wants to be back down in that orchestra pit.
Well, not only that, they'd have to disassemble the whole thing to...
And it's quite never.
The floor is there. It is really, you know, still a compromise.
Yeah. We're going to keep giving it a shot until...
I'm pushing to have a couple of those rows of chairs removed. I don't think they really need that. Or make them so that they could put folding chairs up whenever they needed to in those two rows. If they took those two rows of chairs out, the problem would go away. We'd be back to what we're used to, the tables down front of the stage. We'd then be able to get full use of the screen, yes, in the process of using the back screen. Everything gets shrunk because you've got to keep it above people's heads, and it's just a compromise. But I think it's better than the orchestra pit.
That's all I have. Good.
Just one last comment. I apologize for not getting here earlier, but I was in the air. Again, Catherine, welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to, I personally look forward to working with you, and I'm sure the board does, too. And we have a lot of work to do this year, so we get into the liaison assignments, and Michael Gilberto and I have been talking about some of the things that are important and that we should have a discussion. We also, and I think it was a good suggestion that Mike has made, is we have an annual review of our strategic plan, and we've been doing that after October town meeting, typically in the late October or early November. We want to move it up before October town meeting. So, we didn't pick the date, but it would allow us to get some things into, into play, and we'll also help associated with, you know, setting the agenda and the goals for the next, next budget. So, we'll talk about that in the, in the future. Just trying to pick a date that works for everybody for that. We usually do that offsite, public, open to the public, but we do it in a place where we can sit around a table rather than this typical meeting. Thank you, Michael.
Never, never apologize for asking the questions. It's important, don't feel like you're limited.
Thank you, Michael, for standing in for me.
Oh, my pleasure. And I do apologize to all the board for letting the article 36 go on as long as it did, but I, that was really our first opportunity to hear on that one, so I'm glad we did. All right, so we had a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yul, second by Mr. Siri. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.